Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America.
America. And to the republic.
It stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
For all.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil. Are we having audio issues? Can you can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. Miss a meeting, miss a lot. So, all right. At this time, we'll take the roll call this evening. Please remember that I need you to state the city and state in which you are located for tonight's meeting. We'll start with Councilmember Kennedy.
President, South Lyon, Michigan.
Councilmember Walton.
President, South Lyon, Michigan.
Councilmember Dill.
President, South Lyon, Michigan.
Councilmember Kurzweil. I think she might be she may be having technical issues. Councilmember Kurzweil, I know you can't hear me. You may want to try and exit the meeting and come back in. You are on mute, but you should be able to hear us. We'll come back to Councilmember Kurzweil. Councilmember Kibble.
Here in South Lyon, Michigan.
And Councilmember Richards.
Here, South Lyon, Michigan.
Councilmember Kurzweil, can you hear us now? Okay, it appears as if she is having some sort of tech. Technical difficulties. I am here as well. I'm present and I am here in the city of South Lyon as well. I I can Councilmember Kurzweil, I actually I can hear you.
Can you hear us?
She's not responding, though. She can't hear us.
Right, I did though. Yeah, we can hear her. She can't hear us, but okay, hopefully she can work that out. She is obviously present and we can have her. City Attorney Hamamé, would it be all right if if we let her state where she is later in the meeting? Or do you want us to wait?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, forgive me for all that. Did we did I miss any of the council members outside of Councilmember Kurzweil? Did we get everybody? Okay. At this time, we will move on to the approval of the city council minutes from February eighth two thou or two thousand twenty-one. Councilmember Dill.
I just wanted to point out that it had Mayor Pelchak calling the meeting to order.
I did. I was actually gonna let Councilmember Kibble get that one because it was such a layup.
I'd be there.
No, I'm glad you Councilmember Kibble, I actually don't have you on video. So if you had a hand up there, I did not see it.
Right, I I'm actually struggling with the idea of my camera was working and then it's not. I've got audio, so I'm gonna see if I can monkey around with it and get back on, but.
Okay.
So.
Did anyone else have anything for the minutes from February eighth? Councilmember Kennedy.
I'll go ahead and move the minutes as amended.
I'll support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes. Move on to the approval of the agenda this evening. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion passes. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. If you are new to the Zoom meetings, there are a couple of ways that we can recognize you. There is a raise hand function towards the bottom of the screen. If you move your your cursor down there. Also, if you are on video, just raise your hand and City Clerk Deaton will recognize you. Also, please remember to state your name and address, and remember, we have a two-minute time limit. Do you see anyone out there? City Clerk Deaton?
Not at the moment. I was gonna give him a second.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, now we have one.
Okay.
Hi, I'm not sure if this is me or not. Chuck Mason here, South Lyon, one three seven five seven Bridgewater Court. And I think I'll bring up the one that everybody's very curious about, which is with the rezoning and the traffic flow in Dixboro. I'm over here in Granite Hill subdivision and I'm just very, very interested in having a paved access road as opposed to getting my suspension banged up like it has been for the last 10 years. So I'm sure you've heard this one before. I was just curious what the plans would that be, especially with additional traffic being proposed there.
Is that all you have tonight, Mr. Mason?
Yeah, that's really the whole reason I tuned by was just to all listen up on that. I think it's probably the common topic here.
Yeah, no, thank you. We we usually we do not interact with it because because obviously this is maybe new to you. You will either be able to see kind of our responses during the meeting, or it can be addressed in our our council comments at the end. So thank you.
Okay, no problem. I totally get that. Yeah, I'm a newbie. That was wise enough. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mason.
Mayor Pelchak, we have one more person.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jasmine Valentine. I'm the Marketing and Development Manager at Haven, and I am here. Well, you know, address first. So eight zero one Vanguard Drive, Pontiac, Michigan, four eight three four one. And I am here, like I mentioned, on behalf of Haven in regards to the CDBG funds. So I'm not for sure if I I've been to in-person council meetings. I know with COVID, everything's a little different. So do I speak on behalf of Haven or wait a little deeper into the agenda?
Jasmine, you have two minutes and the floor is yours. So if you have something you'd like to speak on, go ahead. If you'd like to wait, I mean, we have another public comment later, but I obviously you want to speak before we go to that meeting. So go ahead.
Okay, sweet. So like I mentioned, I am a representative of Haven. With you all support last year for the 2019 2020 year, we were able to serve actually twelve clients or residents from South Lyon, and we ask that you continue to support us because, as I've mentioned, we are caring for and providing services for people of South Lyon, and many of them, more than half, actually received our court advocacy services. And if you're not familiar with Haven, we are the only comprehensive agency in Oakland County. Our survivors come to us to receive free services and support to heal from sexual assault and or intimate partner violence. And as we know, as many of you all know, anyone can be victimized regardless of the race, social economic status. So we really appreciate communities such as South Lyon that continue to provide access to the many of survivors in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine. We appreciate your time. You're on mute, obviously, right?
As of right now, Mr. Mayor, no one else has their hands raised.
Thank you very much, City Clerk Deaton. At this time, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to the discussion of downtown with Nate Mack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the application for the final Class C quota license, which is coming from one thirty-five East Lake Street. East Lake Street. That will be on the agenda at the next city council meeting. I've got all the information. I'm compiling everything for council to review, and we can expect that one to be on the agenda for the March eighth meeting for your consideration. We still have one final greenhouse to give out. I was in touch with Suzie's Bar, and they came back to me. Well, initially, they said they they wanted it, and then they came back and said, we don't want it. And so now I'm reaching out to a couple of other restaurants to see if they're interested in it. And if they're not, I'm gonna send it over to Lake Street Tavern because they've indicated they would like to use a second one. However, I wanted to give everyone a chance to get it that doesn't have one. So we've begun planning for the 2021 farmers market season. The Market Manager, Tim Davids, and I have met a few times to discuss budget items as well as programming for the farmers market. We're looking at doing music once per month at the market this year and kind of getting some programming back going after we weren't able to do much due to COVID. Still working to continue the the DDA's budget for 2021, 2022 fiscal year. I'm still, you know, I've gotten some quotes back for some various projects that we're working on. But some of the things that we're potentially looking at doing is replacing the garland in the downtown with artificial garland just in order to kind of save on the cost of that because I've noticed that the the cost year over year kind of tends to go up quite a bit. We're also looking at crack sealing and seal crack sealing and filling the park the parking lot at the farmers market. And then a few other items as well that I'm still trying to work through the budget just to make sure that we have the funds that we want to do things with. And finally, for the phase two of the restaurant relief program, we were allocated a total of twenty-seven thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars of reimbursement funds. So today I was working on kind of a template application for businesses to apply for that. So once that's ready to go out, we'll send that out to them. And in total, with with all the greenhouses, the electrostatic sprayers, the igloo sanitization stations, the city received forty-three thousand and sixteen dollars. So very happy we're able to take advantage of that, and we were able to actually get a 25% increase over our base allocation. So that's all I have for you tonight.
All right, thank you, Nate. Does anyone have any questions for Nate this evening? Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. I just wondered, Nate, if you happen to talk to anybody who had one of the greenhouses to find out if they're popular, if people are using them, especially now that restaurants are open 25%. I just wondered how those are going over.
Yeah, they're going over really well. I've spoken with the Lake Street Tavern, and they said they have people using them all the time. So the way they're, you know, the way they set them up is they do like a reservation for about two hours, and then that allows them to be sanitized in between usage, and that's why we gave them the the sprayers with the with the gallons of spray as well. So.
And how long are you gonna wait until you allocate the other greenhouse?
It's gonna be this week. I'm waiting to hear back from a couple of restaurants, and if they don't get back to me, then we're gonna send it to the tavern. So.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have anything for Nate this evening? Oh, Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
You're muted, Councilmember Kibble.
Thanks, Nate.
There we go. I was wondering, is there any forward motion in the the restaurant on the corner of four corners?
The are you referring to the Drastree Building?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, I believe they're still doing some of the demo work on the inside. I haven't heard from them in a couple of weeks yet, so I don't have much of an update on that, but I can reach out to them and see how things are going and where they're at, and I can get back to you on it.
You have a sense of whether permits have been or excuse me, drawings have been submitted for interior work?
I don't think we've gotten those yet. I know they have permits for the demo on the inside, but.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else with anything for Nate this evening? All right, great. Thanks for the update, Nate.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the Fire Chief report this evening, and Chief Vogel.
Good evening. Very short report tonight. Busy week with us with the weather again. We have shoveled over fifty hydrants that we have reported to the station. Also, we received a lot of notices that people have done their own hydrants. We're very thankful for that. Again, if anybody has a hydrant that is covered and you're unable to shovel, you can call the station, and we will come out and shovel that hydrant. And lastly, I'm proud to announce that we did our promotions. We promoted three people, two lieutenants and one sergeant, and it's pretty exciting. Short report tonight, Mayor.
Hey, that's great, Chief. That's great news on the promotions as well. Does anyone have anything for Chief Vogel? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I was curious. Would you like to give us the names?
Yes, so Sergeant Cindy Conrad was promoted to lieutenant. Sergeant Noachal Jeff was also promoted to lieutenant, and firefighter Taylor was promoted to sergeant.
Wonderful. That's terrific news. All worthy.
Thank you. Thank you for all the support.
Chief, does anyone else have anything for Chief this evening? All right, thanks, Chief. We'll move on to the Police Chief report, and Chief Sobek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things for you as well. Thank you to the South Lyon Fire Department, actually Sergeant slash Lieutenant Cindy Conrad, who provided our CPA. I correctly our CPR recertification training. So all the officers, as well as our two cadets and our administrative assistants, received the training from the FD. So thank you. Our firearms qualification was successful. Everybody passed the, I guess, the the mandate state exam that so. That was done a week or two ago. Our mug shot and AFIS system should be arriving fairly soon. March ninth for our AFIS and March second for our mug shot, which was both paid for out of the DEA funds. Our newest officer is going to fly solo here fairly shortly. He completed his field training process and after three and a half months and just recently got off his his shadow period. For those that don't know what a shadow phase is, it's basically where they they ride with another officer, a field training officer, and that guy is in the car with them. He doesn't say a word, doesn't say a thing. He just responds as though he's in the in the car solo, and he's constantly being evaluated. So you know, when a call comes, I always gotta navigate the quickest and safest way to where that call's at. You know, investigating the case, talking to the individuals, complaints, victims, and so it's kind of like the final exam. And our Joseph Chapsky, who came from us with six years of experience from Burton PD, did a fantastic job. So this Friday, he's flying solo, so we're good to have him with us, and we're looking for a long term from him. So good to have him aboard. And all of our officers who wanted the vaccinations have at least received the first one. Six or seven of us received the second Moderna shot this past Saturday, and it knocked most of us down. So other than the soreness in the arm, I've been fighting the chills and the sweats, and right now I got the sweats going on. So but we're glad that we that we could get those. So other than that, that's all I got for you tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Chief, do we have any update on the the phone installation, how it's going, or is it moving along?
It is moving along. We were supposed to be in last Thursday, and there were some technical difficulties as far as what needed to be done. So it was just merely a programming issue. So we are we're having a basically a citywide phone conversation with them on this Thursday to make sure that everything is in order, and we should receive a final date from them this Thursday. So hopefully, it shouldn't be maybe but a couple more weeks at the most.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Chief, going back to the vaccine on the second shot, did you have any reactions on the first shot?
No, just just the sore arm from the injection site, and other than that, no, nothing at all from the first vaccination. But the second one, it knocked most of us down. We I mean, side effects ranged from like one hundred and two fever to a massive headache to just really fatigued and sweats and fever and chill amongst the seven of us that had it.
So out of the seven that got the second shot, how many had side effects?
We all did.
Thank you.
All of us. Yeah.
Well, Chief, I for one want to thank you for sharing that information. As many of us are are working our way through the vaccinations here, and I will also be getting that second shot of Moderna. I'll be sure to make sure that I'm ready to take that on. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I was just curious. I would like to find out at our next meeting if if the duration was longer than a simple day. We've got relatives that had gone through that where it leaked a little bit into the morning following, but essentially one day's worth of not feeling quite up to par seemed to do that. And if you're in the same boat, that'd be, I think, useful information for the public to understand as well.
Yeah, for for most of us, it was, you know, we received it Saturday morning and then all throughout them. Everything was was okay Saturday evening, and Sunday is when it kind of hit us. You know, I personally woke up with the with the chills and then then the sweats and but the most of the side effects came on all throughout Sunday. Then everybody went back to work today like, fine.
Yeah, that's terrific.
Yep.
Well, again, I appreciate you sharing that to get that out to the public too on what it is that they can expect as as more of the vaccines are rolling out. So thank you for sharing. Anyone else have anything for Chief Sobek tonight? Okay, thanks, Chief. Um, City Manager Zelnik, I'll let you go ahead and take the lead on this one.
All right, tonight's a CDBG public hearing. Each year, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development provides funds jurisdiction throughout the country for projects that meet their national objectives. Here in South Lyon, we receive funds from HUD via Oakland County. This coming year, our tentative allocation will be twenty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars. Last year, the city designated funds to be used for the senior center and Haven. The two thousand twenty-one CEBG application deadline for receiving the funds is Friday, March fifth. On Friday, on February eighth, two thousand twenty-one, the city published notice of CDBG public hearing, which tonight gives the opportunity for hearing public comments relating to allocating those funds. You already heard one comment from an individual from Haven. I've attached the public hearing notice and tentative South Lyon allocation. Requirements for tonight are to open the public hearing, hear any additional public comments, and close the public hearing. Later on in the meeting agenda, which will be immediately after this, we will present and vote on the 2021 CDBG allocation.
Thank you, City Manager Zelnik. At this time, we will open the public hearing for the CDBG public hearing. City Clerk Deaton, if you see anyone stand or raise a hand to speak, please let me know.
No one is raising their hand at the moment.
Okay. So at seven fifty-two, we will now close the public hearing for the CDBG public hearing. And we'll move on to old business number one, 2021 CDBG allocation.
Sure, thanks. The regular scheduled meeting tonight, we have the public, we held the public hearing relating to the CDBG funds allocated to the city of South Lyon. The suggestion this year is that the city will continue to use allocation for 2021 to support the projects that we have funded in recent years, which includes the senior center and Haven. I've attached the 2021 CDBG application and supporting documents. Possible course of actions approved, the selected project as identified, or choose different projects, or choose not to submit the application for funds. The suggested motion is included with your packet as well.
Thank you, City Managers Zelnik. Councilmember Kibble, I saw your hand go up first. If you have something, go ahead.
Well, I'm not aware of any qualified groups that would be better suited to to receive these funds. We've had very good, both of these are instrumental with our community. So I really can't imagine how we would be better served looking outside of this this two group or two these two groups. With that, I'd like to just make the motion that that we approve the selected projects as identified. I'll support.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank all the workers at Haven that deal with a very, very difficult job. A lot of it is domestic violence. And particularly during COVID, they are just absolutely instrumental, and they're a backbone to actually the sanity of some of the individuals that are going through extremely difficult times. This COVID and the lockdowns, many cases have been uncalled for. And unfortunately, women have been the the target of people's frustrations. And I want to thank Haven for stepping in and I mean, the backbone to deal with some very, very difficult life situations. So thank you to all of you in Pontiac and all of you on staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil. I will also add to that, and I want to thank Ms. Valentine for coming out and speaking in the public comment about the Haven. I think we've all heard just how terribly tragic it has been for folks that are in that type of situation here over the past year. And to think that folks are not dealing with that in this community is just is is not true. So it's great to have that here. I on a on another level, I work very closely with our friends at the senior center. My department at the school district provides tech support for them, and I see annually how many folks take advantage and are able to socialize, obviously, in the pre-COVID world, and we hope to get back to that. But that is a linchpin in 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 people's lives here in this community, in our our seniors locally love it and come to that building from around the area. So it definitely makes an impact here. If no one has anything else to add to that, we have a motion in a second on the floor. Do we have any further discussion?
I got a question, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely, Councilmember Richards. Go ahead.
I'm sure this is going to pass as we have motioned it, but just curious. If we wanted to use some of these funds and co-mingle it, let's say, with a drug forfeiture funds and some other funds that we have extra monies in for a project in the in the city, like something to do with a cemetery or sidewalks or a certain street or the bathrooms or something, anything, could we do that? Okay, is it allowable to do that? Or is it just gotta be designated for whatever the motion is? Okay, if we chose if we chose to discuss it and put it on the table.
I guess I'll take a stab at that.
Yeah.
Councilmember Richards, it's my understanding that these funds have to go before the public hearing and and are decided to go towards the direct things that they are associated with, and in this case, it's the senior center in Haven. I don't believe, and I might be speaking out of school here, and if the city attorney would like to help me, feel free. I don't think that there's any chance that any of that could happen.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there are certain there are funds or means at which, you know, the can be allocated. There's dozens of different opportunities for use of CDBG funds. We would need to approve some sort of specific need for that, and some of the air to be used in specific areas that may have to fall in under income guidelines established by HUD as well. So that would have to be reviewed by Oakland County in order to make that determination.
Councilmember Kurzweil.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, I I also think that Chief Sobek could probably speak to the drug forfeiture funds. Those are very specific funds that can only be used for very, very specific purposes, and they're audited. And and I know that the Attorney General's got her eye on on police departments in terms of how they are being used. So I, you know, I think drug forfeiture funds is completely out of the equation. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil, for adding to that. Chief Sobek, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, Councilman Councilmember Kurzweil, that's correct. There's only certain things, certain, I guess, line items that these funds can be spent on. They don't go back in the general fund. You don't mix and match with the general fund. They are specific for law enforcement. There's certain list of things that we can actually use it for. So she is correct. Yes.
Thank you both for that added clarification. I appreciate it. We have a motion in a second on the floor. If we have no further discussion, I will ask that City Clerk Deaton lead us in a roll call vote, please.
Dill?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Pelchak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll move on to new business this evening. New business number one, consider approval of revised resolution establishing policies and guidelines for granting poverty exemption from payment of property taxes, and we'll head over to City Manager Zelnik to lead that.
Due to recent changes to the General Property Tax Act, the provision commonly referred to as poverty exemption, the resolution establishing policies and guidelines for granting poverty exemption from payment of property taxes needs revision. The attached revised resolution establishing the policies and guidelines for grabbing granting poverty exemption from payment of property taxes removes the city application requirement and specifies exemption amounts of 25% fifty or 100%. The resolution will remain in effect without having to approve a revised resolution each year after the annual income levels are updated. Revised resolution is acceptable to Oakland County equalization. If approved now, the resolution would be effective for the March border review. We've attached a resolution establishing policies and guidelines for granting poverty exemption for the payment of property. for granting poverty exemption for the payment of property taxes. The possible course of action is to approve, no action, or postpone this particular resolution. City Attorney and City Treasurer are also here to assist in answering any questions that you may have regarding this subject.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the revised resolution establishing policies and guidelines for granting poverty exemption from payment of property taxes.
Good point.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I just have a question. I'm, when you're talking about the, if the exemption remains intact, I mean, is there some point where they, if they don't qualify, it's a matter of that they're earning too much income? I'm assuming Paul would, would take that.
Well, it could be myself or the city attorney. It could be for numerous reasons. It could be change of income, change of assets, something like that, where they no longer should receive any sort of exemption due to the fact that their levels have changed.
So they just take, they stay on a roster? And they, the board would reach out to them and get their pertinent information to re-qualify? Is that the deal?
That's correct. There's a lot of information you can see is on the application that they have to apply for and resubmit in order to maintain or actually to get an exemption.
Okay, I, I guess what my question is, is are they, are they submitted? Do they have to request the, the submission material? Or does it just show up, the forms show up, and then they provide the information and return it? Do you have any sense of that?
I don't.
Do you want to answer that?
I don't. So Lisa, that Clerk Deaton, since you deal in this.
Well, sorry, my throat's dry. What they will have to do each year, they have to do it every year, if they're going to apply for the exemption, they have to fill out the application. They have to supply the, all the tax information. They have to fill out everything showing what they own. It's very detailed. So they would fill that out, turn it into the city or assessor, and then the board review will go over their application, see if they meet the requirements.
I know this seems like I'm kind of beating this to death, but I'm just kind of curious. Do they get a notice that it's time for the resubmission? Or do they just have to, to react on it knowing that, you know, it's around the time that they're supposed to provide the information?
No, they have to fill out all of that each year for, to, to apply for the exemption.
Lisa, is it a certain time every year that they just know to apply without, have been prompted by the city or the state?
Yes. It's every, the March border review meets every March three times a month, sometimes four if necessary. But it's always in March for.
March is the trigger then, okay.
Yeah.
That's, I'm sorry, that's what I was actually looking for.
Sorry, too much information.
And they can't, and they can't file it immediately after January 1st because of tax date, tax date being December 31st. They can file it immediately after that.
Right.
They don't have to wait for the March border review to actually occur, but they need to file it before the March border review ends.
I see. So their familiarization would tell them about March, but they would know after the first year. Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Uh, just a question here. How many years do the taxes have to be in remission? Or delinquent in, or payment in full or impartial payment before this becomes active for the property owner to go through this procedure?
They don't actually have to have delinquent taxes. They just have to show that they are unable to pay their taxes due to their income. So if they are approved for an exemption this year, it would apply to the 2021 summer/winter tax bill.
Is that all you got, Councilmember Richards? Okay.
I guess I, I just wondered how it, how it activates.
Councilmember Kittle?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, it, I thought that it spoke specifically that you can't be in arrears of taxes to be able to qualify. So I think that kind of answers Carl's question.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
I think what you have here are two issues during the winter, February, March, that deal with property taxes, or relief from property taxes. The one that's before us tonight deals with an exemption from paying property taxes, as Councilmember Kibble clearly stated, correctly stated, are taxes that are current. You can't apply for this exemption if your taxes are in the arrears. If your taxes are in the arrears and not paid, I believe by the end of February, that's a completely different issue. Because those taxes in the arrears now get defaulted, I believe, to the county. Is, is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
So you have two different property tax issues. And maybe that is where there's a little bit of confusion. The timetable for the, for the arrear taxes to go to the county is the end of February. And your property tax exemption is in the month of March. So I don't know if that clears anything up for anybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Walton? Oh, I didn't hear Walton.
She, she's on mute, and it looks like she may have had to step out for a moment.
Okay, I can come back to her. Richards?
Yes.
Um, Pal-Tat?
Yes.
So we just need Councilmember Walton's vote. Do we need to wait for her attorney comment?
She's here.
Sorry, I do approve.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Motion passes. And before we move on to new business number two, Councilmember Kurtzwell, we just have some quick house cleaning. During roll call, we were not able to have you clarify your location, if you would not mind handling that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am present, located in the city of South Line. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. All right, new business number two this evening, city investment policy.
City of South Line is engaged with Anco Consulting Group to create an updated investment policy for the city of South Line. This previous policy was last updated in 1998. I've attached an agreement with Anco Consulting Group and a copy of the proposed draft proposed investment policy. Possible course of action tonight are approve or not approve the agreement with Anco Consulting Group, provide the investment policy for the city of South Line, and also to approve or not approve the investment policy for the city of South Line. Brian Green from Anco is here tonight to answer any questions. Also, I'm here, and also our finance director, Patricia Turner, is here as well.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I just have some little boilerplate things. There's some spelling errors that I think that are, are justifiable to get corrected. On page two, in the, the first section that authorized financial dealer, if you look down, the sentence starts as "may include primary dealers or regional dealers" that it says quality, it should actually say qualify, I'm sure, under Security and Exchange Commission. On page six.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, page five. Credit risk section that, full point two. It says "they," and it should say "the," the, in the end of that sentence, "the city will do business." I know these are, are not critical, but, you know, words matter. And on page six, 2B, the, in the last sentence, it should say "recognized" with the D, recognized rating agency, not recognized. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kittle. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Brian, for being here this evening. I did have some questions on the policy. Just, first of all, can you give me a little bit about who you are? I didn't get a brochure on your, where are you located? Are you located in the state of Michigan? How long have you been in this business? Et cetera.
Sure, yeah. So a bit of background. So I work for Anco Consulting. Anco Consulting is one of the largest independent institutional investment consulting firms here in the U.S. We're headquartered in Orlando, but I'm actually one of three individuals that works here in Michigan out of our office in Southfield. I'm actually joining you this evening from my home in Royal Oak. So this is the 21st year that I've been working with predominantly municipalities around the state of Michigan, helping them with their pensions, retirement systems, retiree healthcare, defined contributions, you know, anything from an investment standpoint, whether that's investment of assets, review and update of policies, you know, education of city council and different stakeholders. So this is all we do, day in and day out. I myself work with approximately 22 or 23 different communities. Most of them are around the, the southeast Michigan area. Few further north, but the, my predominant business is really Wayne Oakland and Monroe counties and, and communities that reside inside of each of them.
How long have you been with this company?
So I've been with Anco. This is now my sixth year with, with the company.
And before that?
Before that, I was with Morgan Stanley and its predecessor firms.
Okay. I, I'm just here, and are you able to release the names of your other clients that you have in the area? Or is that considered by you confidential?
No, I, I mean, I can speak to, you know, communities that I've met with in the, in, in the past week or two. I mean, it's, at a meeting this morning with Wayne County for their employees' retirement system, a meeting last week with West Moonfield Township, with the city of Auburn Hills, with the city of Trenton, with Midland County, Monroe County, and, and a variety of plans for the county as a whole. City of Ferndale, city of Royal Oak, and, and that's just to name a few of the communities that I work with around the state.
Okay, well, I want to make a distinction between those communities that you've made presentations in front of, and communities that you actually have a contractual obligation to work with.
I have a contractual obligation to work with all of those communities.
Okay. And my next question goes back to, what experience did you have as a financial consultant during handling municipality issues? If this is applicable, I don't know if you were doing it then, back in the time period between 2008 through about 2012, 1314? Were you, were you in this industry during that period of time?
I've been doing this nonstop since March of 2000.
And so how did you adjust municipality portfolios during that period of time? This was during the recession?
Yeah, I, I mean, we're in ongoing discussion with, with, sorry, the question has me a little off guard because it's a bit outside the scope of, of updating investment policy statement related to the retiree healthcare funding vehicle and, and the cash management portfolios. You know, I can speak generally, as we're working with clients through that time period, we're in the active, ongoing discussion, rebalancing portfolios, taking advantage of market opportunities, taking risks where it was warranted, taking risk off the table where it was warranted. But all in a very active and collegial manner as we work with, with all of our clients.
So you have experience going through that up and down in the business cycle?
I would argue that I've been through three significant market dislocations, 2000 to 2002, 2008, 2009, and a 21-day period in March and April of, of 2020.
Okay. I'm going on to page two, under the delegation of authority, paragraph three. And if you could sort of clarify that for me, I, and the city manager also. I get the delegation of authority, but who makes the final investment decision? I mean, how, how does this work? Do you present a recommendation to the city manager when you see something out of whack? Do you and the investment team then sit down and say, okay, I think we need to move things around? Okay, we're going to move things around? Or do you go to city council and say, we're going to move things around? We need your approval?
So I think there should be a bit of clarification. Our role, our only role with the city of South Line is assistance with the drafting and updating of this investment policy statement. Once this project is completed, that's the end of our engagement. So as I read this investment policy, you know, the delegation of authority, the investment team, which is the city manager, the finance and benefits administrator, and treasurer, those three individuals, and it requires a majority of those individuals to agree to a specific transaction. If a new investment wanted to be made, or a portfolio change were to be made, that investment team has the authority, and it requires a majority of those team members to be able to implement any actions. Anco would not be involved. That would be a different engagement and a, and a different discussion from a contractual standpoint. And it's outside of the scope of the agreement that we have before you today.
So Paul, who is going to provide you with the advice to make an investment decision?
Well, as, as Brian just mentioned, the three of us, the treasurer, the finance administrator, and myself will make the determination about where we will be investing the funds, within what organizations, whether it's the banks, whether it's the local government investment pool, or other institutions, to determine, and based upon cash flow needed for the city, based upon fund balance, and based upon, you know, future needs, in order to determine where we will invest those dollars. But the actual investment of, of specific dollars, let's say with a local government investment pool, as we brought in the county treasurer, it will be up to them. They will be making the determination about where they will be investing those dollars. We will not be making that determination.
I just don't know if the city itself internally has that kind of experience. I thought that this, I thought we were getting quasi-broker experience, you know, like going to a broker that would provide us with investment opportunities, bonds, municipal bonds that are safe, you know, that's what I, so I'm glad I'm asking these questions, so that's.
And that's exactly what we're doing. When we go to Oakland County, they have all those specific funds that they will be investing those dollars in. We will not be saying, okay, we want you to invest 20% in this, this particular account, and 40% with this company, and 80% overseas, or anything like that. They will make those, that determination. However, the investment team will make a determination based upon cash flow when we need to transfer funds, whether it's from a short-term investment, or whether it's dollar amounts that we deposit with Oakland County or another institution. But we will not be specifically investing those other dollars in those amounts, but we're going to be looking at short-term when we decide to go with banks, because right now, that's where all of our money is. We do not have long-term investments, and that's why we needed to create a policy that we would follow and that we would start to move those dollars in. But we will not, Patricia and I and Lisa are not going to be in charge of investing hundreds of thousands of dollars in pork bellies, or gold, or Bitcoin. That's not going to be our determination to do those sort of things.
If I may, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You think, I, I would like to address it with, with the example of how we work with MERS, with our pension, our direct benefit pension, or recently when we started our OPEB trust with their retiree health financial vehicle. They have the portfolio managers there that handle the overall investments. We're given a selection of investments that are within GASB protocols, such as, I believe it's GASB 31, that allows us municipalities to make certain investments. So they would make recommendations as to what investments we could possibly participate in, choose the vehicles that we would participate in. And then it would be up to that team within that institution, such as MERS, who then watches the day-to-day activity and determines when things have to move around or fluctuate, depending on if we're in, you know, a, a different yield program. Some, you know, some investments we. Some, you know, some investments we may choose might be long-term, and we don't have much activity, others might, you know, have more movement that would require more activity. But the three of us as an investment team would not be day trading or doing anything along those lines because we are not licensed to do that. You know, we are, that is out of our scope of work that we do here for the city. So we, we are just creating a policy that allow us to work with organizations that do have the resources to do that, so that we are not keeping the amount of money that we currently have in just, you know, checking and saving and money market accounts, which is not doing a good service for the city or the residents to be holding all of our funds up in those type of accounts, which are earning very little interest and not, you know, doing much, and not necessarily a wise investment. This would give us an opportunity to move some of those funds into other things, such as the Oakland County Local Government Investment Program that we've had previous discussions on, where we would be able to earn some more interest, you know, make the money work a little bit better for our residents, but also have those experts, you know, working with those dollars and not relying on just, you know, the financial team here at the city. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. And thank you very much. But I have a feeling that the years of low inflation and no interest are, are going to be gone fairly quickly. Just look at your gas prices, increase in those. Number two, on internal controls, I just want to make sure that what, whatever you do is going to come under audit of Plant Moran. Am I correct about that?
Yes, absolutely.
And then on page five, wanted to go to liquidity. It looks like you're, you're going to be required by this policy to, it says that your portfolio shall remain sufficiently liquid. So that tells me that you're really not going to be able to do a lot of long-term investing. Because here it's telling you pretty liquid. To me, Brian, I don't know about you, but what, how do you define liquidity? Like six months, a year?
So really, the premise here is, because we're talking about short-term cash needs, is, you know, the idea of buying a bond, right? And let's be clear, in this specific part of the portfolio, what's permissible? You know, rule number one is don't lose money. Rule number two is don't forget rule number one, because we're, this is cash management, right? This is, this is trying to earn incremental returns that, that help from a, from a budgetary standpoint. But this is not trying to generate some outsized return for this part of it. So safety is paramount. So what this section allows for is, there may be at times where, you know what? We have a capital project that we know is coming in two years. And we've got monies earmarked for it. So rather than investing those funds into a, a security that offers daily liquidity or, you know, a money market fund, we might buy a treasury bill or treasury bond, right? A, a government bond that matures in two years. So we can tie that liquidity need to a specific security, and that allows for a little bit more flexibility and may offer the potential for greater income. Where we have seen this gone awry, and this is part of the reason this section is in here, is, you know, a broker calls and says, hey, I've got a really great deal on the security here. I think you should buy it. Lo and behold, it matures in seven years. And even though that may qualify under Public Act 20 as a permissible investment, it probably isn't a prudent investment. So this forces the reader and enforces things from an audit and review standpoint to, to focus more on, on maintaining that liquidity.
I think this is an important discussion, because this liquidity, to me, as I read it, or at least as I'm interpreting it, is going to tie into a capital improvement plan. So the only way you are going to be able, as the investment team, to make a decision about whether you're going to get into an investment vehicle that matures in two years or three years, because you have something that you need to fund in that time period. To me, I'm saying, well, then you better have a capital improvement plan to justify why you're making the investment decision you are, to tie up liquidity for that period of time. Does that make sense? And, and we don't have a capital improvement plan in place yet, do we?
No, we do not. However, currently, all our dollars right now are invested in bank vehicle, banks. And right now, we're not getting the interest. And to, as we looked at through Oakland County's local government investment pool, we can predict based upon having pretty consistent cash balances within our fund balance that we can obtain the rates that are, or rates that have been shown, that have come about through the local government investment pool, which have raised from maybe a 1% interest to over 2.5% just over the last year and a half. And right now, instead of us only getting 0.25 at the most, we are definitely going to be improving our cash position just by making even slight investments in that. We've already discussed, we're not going to be jumping into this and putting millions of dollars in these amounts or in these particular accounts. We're going to be looking at what are predicting our cash flow is, based upon a capital improvement plan, based on revenues that come in for tax season, and based upon when we see expenditures. So we're not depositing and removing money through the local government investment pool or other vehicles on a regular basis. And we could have a steady supply of cash through other liquid accounts and still be, still have the investment within those pools.
No, I mean, I'm in favor of this. I mean, I've been arguing for this for five years. So I, you know, I'm not giving you a hard time. I just want to understand exactly what this is. On page six at the top, Brian, why would a security swap be included in this investment?
So this is really, you know, the, while the intent here is to be able to leverage the Oakland County Local Government Investment Pool, when we craft a policy, we want to be able to have a little bit of room to grow. So to the extent the community continues to grow, the tax base continues to grow, the fund balance continues to grow, there may be other opportunities that exist as your asset pool gets larger to engage in different transactions. And in that case, it might be the opportunity, you know, you can think of a swap here that's being listed, you know, swapping one bank CD for another, you know, a transaction like that, or one treasury bond for another. So we want to have that, that as a permissible item, because for larger communities that we work with, they may undertake that transaction on a, you know, on an occasional basis, and it's completely permissible. So this is really intended to be language that you can potentially grow into. You know, as we crafted this, the goal was, this isn't something you should need to revisit in substantial form on a regular basis. This may need occasional tweaks. I know for one, for certain, and I'll tip my hat to Councilman Kibble, I think I've read this 10 times, and I didn't catch those three spelling errors. I've been, you know, I've been at this for 20-plus years, and I swear every time I read one of these policy documents, I find something that spell check didn't collect, didn't correct. So there's language here that is really intended to make this last a little bit longer before you need to go in and do another review of it, substantial review of it.
Well, the last review was, last policy was 1998, so I guess 22 years. You know what? I would like to go back to page one. I missed this one. Page one, and it's dealing with the pooling of funds. And it says, except for cash in certain restricted and special funds. I want to deal with that language right there. It's my, what would be an unrestricted fund where you can pool this money together? Because you have sewer and water, that's a special fund. So I assume you would not be able to pool any money out of their fund balance. If we do a mill, let's, I'm just sort of talking. Let's say we do a mill and we target that towards road improvements only. I take it you wouldn't be allowed to pool that money, because that's pretty restricted. I don't see where you can pool any money for the cemetery. That's pretty restricted. So what are you pooling? Is it general fund money? Because that's just an investment policy then. What, what, what do you, what funds can you pool?
So we will traditionally see, you know, you'll see water and sewer, you'll see roads, you'll see a lot of those designated funds pooled for investment purposes. Now, I want to make an important distinction. When we talk about pooling for investment purposes, there's, there's still the underlying accounting side of things. So, you know, you could have two, let's just say for the, for the sake of this example, you know, you've got one water and sewer fund that has $2 in it, and you've got a road improvement fund that's got a dollar in it. So you can pool those together from an investment standpoint to invest $3 or, or, to make this, you know, more relevant, it's $2 million and $1 million. So you've got $3 million to pool from an investment standpoint. That is still accounted for separately and independently on the city side from an accounting and finance standpoint. Income is allocated proportionally to each side of it. That's something that Plant Moran audits on an annual basis, and audits on an ongoing basis. But where you may see restricted funds, now you hit it right in the head, like cemetery funds are traditionally much more restricted and cannot be consolidated and pooled with other assets. You could have a donor to the city that places very specific restrictions on the funds, and that would fall outside of this policy, because those would have a specific restriction on it that they couldn't be, you know, commingled with any other assets. So there's an important distinction here. There's the pooling of funds for investment standpoint, but there is still, as I've mentioned, the underlying kind of framework and infrastructure from an accounting standpoint that tracks every dollar assigned to every individual account, sewer and water, road improvement, parks and rec, whatever it may be, from a city accounting standpoint.
I have a question.
Councilmember Richards, just one moment. I don't believe Councilmember Kurtzwell's done just yet.
And then on appendix, on appendix B, the MERS retiree health fund vehicle. What, what is, what are we investing from that? Because it's, what money is being invested? What money would come on a MERS that would be part of this policy? I thought the MERS funds were paid on a quarterly basis, or whenever you pay them. How is this fitting in?
If I may. This just, this is just added to our policy, because we wanted to include all investments that the city participates in as part of the policy. And since our OPEB trust is housed in the MERS retiree health fund vehicle, that's why we wanted to include it. So right now, our assets are a little over $65,000 that we have invested within two programs in that vehicle. So this policy is just discussing that. And if we were to make changes to, you know, right now, we're in their, where one of them is like their short-term income. If we decided we didn't want to be in that one anymore, and we wanted to put into another long-term investment, then this would help us have guidance in doing that.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Brian and Patricia, you've been very helpful. Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Richards, you had a question? Go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Does this policy, which we haven't had in years, address the issue at, let us say, we have a capital improvement that we have to make, say for instance, in those sanitary sewer and treatment plant facilities. It's not necessary right now, but it's required by state law in five years or something down the road. And we, our, our policy with you works for three years, okay, to set it up. Can we pool these funds that we have, that we are not restricted, like cemetery, aside from cemetery and such, to go towards a, a bond at a higher interest rate, let us say, that would mature at the time that the improvement will have to be made down the road? Can something like that be applicable in, in this overall policy scope? Thank you.
So the policy would, the policy would permit, you know, that goes to the earlier discussion around liquidity. If there's, if there is the balance that allows it and a clear plan, then the policy would contemplate that that would be allowable.
Okay, well, who makes the determination? Okay?
We would have to, at the city, the investment team would have to make the determination about when those funds are going to be needed. So we would ensure that we would have the cash flow to make that investment in whatever improvement was needed at a specific time. So we would ensure the proper operation, you know, of the city, and whether it's, you know, paying, paying payroll, paying other qualified payments that we need to make. We would ensure that we have those dollars available when needed.
Okay, fine. That's, so we clarify, that's all.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to move to approve the investment policy for the city of South Lyon.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second on the floor. Was that you, Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Yes, I was just kind of curious. There was some discussion about Oakland County people being essentially the financial managers. It sounded, is that who we're going to rely on primarily?
That is just one vehicle that we're looking at. That's how we brought Andy Meisner in last year, because that was a large enough investment pool that municipalities have been using for years. And we would definitely take advantage of that one most likely first.
Well, I don't disagree with that, that strategy. My, my concern is, are we going to be essentially relying on their recognizing opportunities for us or, or the clock running on particular things, that the investments that we do end up having them hold? And there, you'll interact with them and hope like crazy that nobody ends up overlooking something?
Well, they will only handle their particular portion that we invest with them. And we will have to make that determination on how much of that is. We will not get involved in the day-to-day investment and questioning of them about how they're handling our specific dollars that they have. They need to follow their specific guidelines within their policy. And as, you know, and they do in fact meet ours. But we needed to update this policy in order to invest in those local government investment pools, as well as us looking at what our cash flow needs are with the banks, with CDs, or whatever else we decide. But they will only handle the portion that we provide them or that we invest with them. Everything else will be determined through our office and through this investment team about what our needs were. We're going to have, that's going to take some time to determine, based upon, as Councilmember Kurtzwell mentioned, regarding our specific needs and how much money we need at a given time for a specific purpose. I hope I answered that correctly.
Okay, so the funds that we allow them to manage, is it at a, a particular sketched-out duration? Or is it simply let them handle it and, and keep tabs on what's going on with that?
Well, we will get, we will get, we will get regular reports on what it is, but we will make that determination of what we need, because they are not an institution where you're going to be taking money out and putting money in on a weekly basis. We will be looking for specific amounts, putting it in, making sure we have the investment. And then as we begin to feel more comfortable about what our plans actually are, we'll make the determination of whether we invest more or invest less. But we will be, you know, making transactions based upon need. And those are the three things, things that the three of us are going to have to look at.
Well, there will be relationship building and, and some educating ourselves in what our patterns will need to be. But I was just kind of curious if we're, especially with Oakland County, if the objective is to schedule particular events, this is where we're going to end up ultimately needing the, whatever the enriched funds are. So, you know, that, that's what we're driving all of our decision-making with Oakland County on. And I'm assuming maybe there'll be multiple pools of money that Oakland County would handle for different elements of our needs? Or will we simply just let them decide what happens to the money that we allow them to deal with?
Well, they make the investment. Well, they make the investment. They determine that. We discuss with them. And Patricia, I don't know if you want to go into the different types or the pool that in fact that they do have or describe how that's put together.
Well, I apologize, I don't have any of that information with me. But if, in a sense, yes, we would give them a certain amount of money, and they would give us some options that we could invest with those funds. There, you know, I, I would have, I don't remember the exact amount, but there's a few different options similar to some of our MERS accounts where some would be more short-term, some would be more long-term. And we could either do a combination of those or just put it all into one particular type of fund. And then after that, it would be their responsibility, again, to make any kind of movements. So they have analysts that work for the county that that's all they do all day, is watch the markets, move the funds around. Because again, all the funds are pooled together from the different municipalities that participate in those investment groups. So they're working with quite a large dollar amount. So they're making those decisions on a daily and weekly basis. And then we will receive monthly reports that we can review as to, you know, how our funds are doing, and then more formal quarterly reports that we would, you know, most likely share with council to determine if we needed to make some changes. But, but, you know, this is a type of investment where, as Paul said, we wouldn't want to be putting money in and then six months later pulling it back out. Whatever funds we decide we want to invest with Oakland County, we want these to be more of a longer-term investment. So these are funds that, after we've established what our cash flow needs are for the next couple of years, we've looked at the capital improvement plan that we're, been working on in the city and some of the projects that are coming up. We would determine then what dollar amount through, you know, these, these fund balance dollars that we have in all these different bank accounts, we feel comfortable putting into a more longer-term investment that could kind of ride out some ebbs and flows in the market. And, you know, we could kind of, again, if we were to put some things in to a certain investment fund that we didn't feel was performing the way we wanted it to or felt comfortable, we would have options to make some changes. But we wouldn't want to be using it like a bank where we would be putting money in and pulling money out consistently.
Okay, I, I do see them as being a vehicle that would be helpful for, for long-term strategies. But when, once we start getting, once the capital improvement plan is up and running and we know where deadlines are, are they likely to end up being the ones that will, will be carrying some of these investments? Or do you have other entities that you think are better suited to, to use, to strategize that, that kind of a money-earning vehicle?
These, truthfully, council member, this, these are questions that we're just beginning to answer, that we're just as a group talking about and looking at as we're analyzing the city's finances. So we definitely know that Oakland County is one investment we want to do. We will probably be, you know, looking at other things. I'm sure more short-term items such as CDs because as we know, maybe in two years, we're going to need a certain amount of funds. That might be a better investment. So we are just really, truly at the beginning stages of having a true investment team and analyzing what the financial needs of the city are going to be in the next, you know, five, 10 years.
Well, okay, Mr. Green, what is, what is your policy advice going to, to do to create an environment that structures us more comfortably than, than sort of the discussion that we're having here?
And so I would say, you know, first, you should be commended because you're, you're... I like, when I, when I think of my interactions with the auditors, they're much more appreciative of asking for permission rather than forgiveness. So you're going about this the right way in terms of developing a policy and getting that in place before you take the steps to do anything additional from an investment standpoint. So, you know, my first advice to clients pursuing an avenue like this is, is take the time to craft a policy so they understand the frameworks of how decisions are going to be made and what's allowable and what's not. And, you know, within this policy statement, there's a lot of things that are allowable. As I'd mentioned earlier, the goal here is to write a document that probably, you know, that allows for more than what you want to do right now. As the community grows, as the asset base grows, as the tax base grows, you're going to have some more flexibility, hopefully have some more flexibility. You know, my, my brother-in-law, my niece and nephew live in, in South Lyon, and they've been there for about 15 years. And every time I go drive back to their house, I'm like, well, the community's changed again, you know. There's more here, there's more people, there's more going on. My advice here is, is, you know, continue to focus on the plan and, and find out where monies are needed and, and build that roadmap. And, you know, outside of that, and until that is really formulated, you're going to want to keep things as conservative as possible and as liquid as possible. And that, you know, a shining example is where that Oakland County local government investment pool. A lot of your neighboring communities use that. And, and the clients that I work with on an ongoing basis, like West Bloomfield and Auburn Hills and some other communities, leverage that pool to invest excess cash, and it's, it's, it's done an absolutely fabulous job. The, the treasurer's office and their team there have built a great platform to help neighboring communities with, with these, with cash needs, with the investment of cash. And have generated a really, really remarkable track record at a really, really low cost.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So we have a motion in a second on the table. My concern is, is that there is two suggested motions on here, and it appears as if we are on the second one. Does it matter? Do we need to approve the first one before we can go with the second one? I'm assuming that's the case.
Most likely, yes.
Okay.
Can we defer the, the first one? And I'll make the motion for the, for the second one, and I'll make the motion for the first one.
The attorney of mommy, would that be all right?
I'm trying to go back to the agenda. The first one being the contract with Antco?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Oh, I will make the motion that we, we approve the agreement with Antco Consulting Group to provide the investment policy for the city of South Lyon.
And I'll support that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kivell. I, we had a tight one there. I don't know who said to second that.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, was it Councilmember Walton? Any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call?
Walton? Yes. Richards?
Yes.
Kurtswell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kivell?
Yes.
Palchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. We now have a motion by Councilmember Kurtswell, supported by Councilmember Kennedy to improve the investment policy for the city of South Lyon. Do we have any further discussion on that motion? City Clerk Deaton, could you again, please, lead us in a roll call?
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kivell?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kurtswell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Palchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Green, for being here.
Yeah, thank you all. Great question. Truly appreciate the dialogue.
We'll move on to new business number three this evening. First reading of ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of South Lyon, conditionally rezoning 34.42 acres, parcel number 21-30-126-003, from industrial one, light industrial to R3, single-family residential, using the open space preser, preservation option. Excuse me. Before we get started, and I invite Ms. McIntyre in to, to lead this, I'm going to ask that city council members, please allow that this presentation to go through its entirety. If you do have a major issue that needs to be brought up immediately, go ahead and signal to be recognized. We will, we will address that. But just to try and stay on target here for some efficiency, maybe we allow the presentation to go first, and then we can address the questions from city council afterwards, okay? All right, thank you. Ms. Kelly McIntyre, the, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Palchat. This agenda item comes to you with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. As you mentioned, it's the first reading of the ordinance to amend the official zoning map to conditionally rezone about 34 acres of land on Dixboro from light industrial to R3, single-family, using the open space preservation option. In, in October 2020, the applicant, Thomas Schroeder of Cornerstone Residential Group, with permission from the property owner, Pathway Builders, approached the city to conditionally rezone the property from industrial to residential and to develop it into 59 single-family residential units using an open space concept plan that preserves a majority of the site's wetlands. Conditional rezonings allow a parcel of land to be rezoned for use not otherwise permitted in the district through an agreement with the municipality where the property owner voluntarily offers conditions or material benefits to the city. This type of development tool is authorized by the Michigan Zoning Act PA 110 of 2006. For some background information, in September 2020, the applicant requested to rezone this property from industrial to RT to family residential. After discussion with the Planning Commission at that meeting, the request was withdrawn. The applicant subsequently applied for a conditional rezoning from light industrial to R3 and to use the open space preservation option. The request and concept preliminary site plan were presented to the Planning Commission on November 12, 2020. After a public hearing and discussion, the application was tabled by the commission so that the applicant could provide additional information, including a market study or information in writing providing evidence that the property is not marketable and cannot be developed as industrial. On January 14, 2021, the Planning Commission reviewed the additional information provided by the applicants and made a recommendation to city council to approve the conditional rezoning request with a 4-2 vote. The conditional rezoning was recommended for approval with the following voluntary offerings by the applicant. One, installation of a sidewalk along West Lake Street or 10 mile from the subject's east property line to South Hagadorn Street. Two, installation of sound deadening windows or triple-pane windows in all residential units. And three, construction of the homes using two-by-six walls and additional insulation to mitigate noise concerns from the tube bell. It's important to note that this property has been before the city's Planning Commission and council several times over the past 30 years. It dates back to 1989 when the property owner, at their request, request, asked the city to rezone the property from R2, single-family, to light industrial. This request was approved in 1999, and then the property received, property owner received site plan approval for a light industrial park that consisted of 11 units. It's commonly known in our city as the West End Industrial Park. Four years after that site plan approval, the property owner installed water, sewer, and the... in West End Industrial Park. No, in 2016, the property owner requested that it be rezoned from light industrial to RM1, multiple-family residential. This request was reviewed by the Planning Commission and the city council and was unanimously denied. In September 2020, Mr. Schroeder approached the city to rezone the property, first, as I mentioned, to R2, RT, which is two-family residential, and then withdrawing that application, a new application to R3, single-family, using open space preservation option to develop. Following the Planning Commission's January 14 recommendation, the city county, city attorney prepared a draft conditional rezoning agreement, which is in your packet. If the rezoning is approved this evening, the council will then be asked to consider a second reading, conditional, approval of the conditional rezoning agreement and approval of the preliminary open space preservation plan at a future meeting. But what's important to note is tonight, we are just focusing on the rezoning request and the first reading. You have my review letter dated January 6, 2021, which details the criteria in which a conditional rezoning is evaluated. I based my review of this proposal on the rezoning criteria, consistency with the city's master plan and the proposed use as it relates to the surrounding zoning districts. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning. However, I did not recommend approval based on the following reasons. One, that the proposed single-family residential designation is not consistent with the city's master plan and future land use for the property. Two, that less than 5% of the city's land is zoned and master planned for industrial, and that by rezoning the property to single-family residential, it does not meet a land use goal for the city or a need for the city. Three, evidence has not been provided that demonstrates that the property can't be used for any of the permitted special land uses or by right uses in the current light industrial zoning district. And four, that the proposed use is not compatible with surrounding industrial uses to the east and the south. I have provided you with a plethora of information, including my letter and package from February 15, which includes the ordinance language to amend the rezoning map, planning commission minutes from January 14, 2021, and the November 12, 2020 meeting, my CIB review letter, as well as the HRC letters. They are our engineering consultants for the city, fact sheet regarding conditional rezonings, and additional information regarding the vacant parcels in the city. The applicant has provided you with a February 11 letter, information on their rezoning request, their application, and their supporting information. There are three possible courses of action that you can take this evening. You can approve, deny, or table the first reading of the conditional rezoning. At this point, I will entertain questions from the council. I know that the applicant is here, and after I answer questions, perhaps then, maybe then they can address the council. But I would first like to answer any questions you have at this time.
That's great. Perfect, Ms. McIntyre. Councilmember Kennedy, you go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Kelly, you know, I had the, the opportunity to attend the Planning Commission meetings that took place via Zoom, the, the three meetings too last year, one at the beginning of this year. I think during those meetings, you asked for that market analysis at each of those meetings to be provided. Is it my understanding, is it correct that you had, do not have that market analysis? They had the, they had the realtors show up, Thomas Duke, and he talked about, we've made a real concerted effort here, but nothing's selling, and it's cheaper to do something out of Lyon Township. But that really didn't come across as an in-depth market analysis, per se. Is that what you're waiting for still?
Yes, that is correct. We did ask for either, well, two things, evidence of the marketing that has occurred over the past, you know, they said 20 to 30 years. We would like to see some documentation of that marketing effort. And the second was a market analysis indicating that the property, you know, really isn't viable as industrial. The applicant's real estate broker provided us with, I think, about 20 properties within a area around this parcel of other industrial parks or pieces of property that are listed for sale. Some of those are listed for, you know, thousands of days, which actually, to me, indicates that, you know, the fact that this particular piece of property is still, you know, available and not completely developed, isn't uncommon with the area that perhaps right now, industrial properties are not being, you know, developed as quickly as residential. But it's not unique to that situation. So to answer your question, we have not been provided with an analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dilg, go ahead. Councilmember Dilg, you're still muted, just, yeah, I know.
Can't believe I'm still doing that. Thank you, I have a couple of questions. Okay, I know this is a long time ago. But when the property owner first asked for a rezoning of the property from R2 to light industrial in '89, that was on their own accord, right? So what has changed? What has changed now? What has changed about the property, about whatever, to make it so that now they want to... to switch it back or switch it to something else? That's what I'm interested in.
Actually, nothing has changed from, you know, the physical standpoint of the uses of the adjacent lands and the surrounding land. I think what has changed is the property owner's desire, but, you know, the information that they provided and the reasons that they applied when seeking the change to industrial in nineteen eighty-eight were that it was surrounded by industrial property, and it really wasn't, I think they said that it was unlikely that the land would remain single-family and because it abuts the industrial. Those standards, those situations still exist today, so nothing has changed from a land use standpoint.
And then, in the amount of time, many years, that it has been light industrial, is there a reason why it hasn't been developed at all? I mean, I know there's the road and some utilities, but it seems to me like most industrial parks are kind of built and then people move into them or some, you know, I'm not an expert on this, but I just wonder why it hasn't been developed or even attempted to be developed in that way.
Well, in my experience, industrial properties are developed by a property owner and then users come to them, so it's truly the building and they will come. Industrial users don't tend to be in the business of, you know, construction and building their own businesses, they tend to lease buildings because they outgrow their building and want to, you know, if they're successful, and move on. I think that, so, I am not sure why this property was never further developed. I think that, you know, and this is just, you know, my opinion, that if buildings were put on this property, perhaps it, you know, it could, would have been utilized more quickly. I do know that there are other industrial parks within, you know, miles of this property that were built and then leased to industrial users and are very successful to this day.
Can I ask a couple of questions more?
Certainly, Councilmember Dil, go ahead.
I don't even know if this is a question, but I have a serious concern about putting that many residential homes on Dixboro Road, and I just, I know that I spoken to, I put it out on Facebook today to ask people what their opinions are, and I got a lot of responses and a lot of emails from people that have this many concerns, but that's one of them. I'm just wondering if that has ever been, if this was addressed during the Planning Commission meetings? It just seems like a disaster waiting to happen to me.
You mean as far as the traffic that could potentially be generated?
The traffic and the fact that it's a dirt road and it becomes quite a mess even after a few. I know there were some residents that were concerned, saying that buses even going down that road now, that it's already, you know, a horrible bumpy ride, and I just think it would just keep getting worse. So it's just a concern that I have, and I know a lot of other people have as well. And I just wondered if that was addressed during the Planning Commission meetings?
It was not addressed extensively. There was concern and mention that, you know, it's unpaved and that, you know, it's a county road and the city really doesn't have certain, so there were those concerns, but not an in-depth discussion on the amount of traffic. I think that if this was to go forward, we would, you know, look to have a little bit, we would look to see some traffic studies to indicate, you know, the volume of traffic. There certainly was a concern about, you know, the intersection of Ten Mile and Dixboro, especially with the Charleston Park across Ten Mile, and then also the multifamily apartments that are being constructed there on the corner, and the amount of traffic in totality that would occur there, and whether any sort of improvements might need to take place. So those are things that are concerned, but at this, at this point in time, the Planning Commission did not get too in-depth into those, those are things that they thought, well, that could be addressed later or after the applicant is, has received the blessing or the approval of the conditional rezoning.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, I'm going to come back to you because you have already went. Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I'm a little bit surprised that we're pursuing this in the manner that we are, the idea that we would approve a rezoning, knowing exactly what the, the project is going to be at the conclusion of the rezoning, without actually talking about the project. That just seems odd. So essentially, the only protection that we have once the rezoning takes place is that they would have a year to be able to, to get things up and running and get approvals, if I'm remembering correctly, I think that that's, that's typical, isn't it? Kelly?
Yes, it is, you know, and in my review, I provided a comprehensive review of the actual development itself, and you are right, with a conditional rezoning, the development or proposed development itself is tied to the rezoning. So if it is approved, nothing other than what has been submitted may be constructed. The reason why I didn't necessarily go into all the nuances of the site plan today is that this is the first reading, and should we get past this, then at the subsequent council meeting, then we would go into greater detail about the details of the site plan. The site plan is conceptual and really is to demonstrate to the council that a development can be built that meets the ordinance standards without, you know, the need for deviations. That has been done, but essentially, the question is whether this is an appropriate site for the development, and the question is the rezoning.
One, I apparently am like the edit man tonight, but on the second page on here, it's mistakenly, the comment in there says that the draft conditional rezoning agreement contains time limits as associated or as authorized by the state, with the, which the owner must meet the zoning or the parcel would go back to R1A. So at the very least, that should end up being changed, it says, it's already zoned industrial, so it would end up reverting back to industrial, so.
Yes, I apologize, yes, thank you, that is correct.
I'm still kind of stuck with the whole notion that we would entertain the idea of the transition to the zoning without the specific site that the conditions are laid upon, so.
Councilmember Kittle, just a moment. City Attorney Hamamé, please, go ahead.
Councilmember Kittle, you're not precluded from talking about the proposed development today. The idea being, you have to have two readings for the rezoning for it to even be adopted. And so we're bringing it to you now, and the reason Kelly gave you everything was because if you did want to talk about it today, you're welcome to, but the only decision that should come from today is whether or not to move the zoning ordinance amendment to second reading, and then at the next meeting, you will have the agreement and the second reading, which would then be adopted together.
Well, I mean, it's a time efficiency thing, but it doesn't really, in my view, I think that we would be better off taking a comprehensive look, and we could have actually tried to find, find some of the foibles of what we see as the project, if there are any, which would weigh into our decision whether or not we wanted to entertain the idea of the rezoning, that's.
Councilmember Kennedy, you had something, do you still have something?
I do.
Go ahead.
First off, going back to something that Kelly mentioned about the fact that if you build it, they will come, I think that's, you hit the nail on the head with that, Kelly. I had a business owner come to me and looking for light industrial space in the city. Guy runs a window cleaning business, he wanted a building in which he could park his vehicles, store ladders, and all of his equipment. You know, what we had is three empty spaces over on Mill Street, basically, and we talked about the property that's out here, but this guy wanted to move into a building right now. He's not looking to buy a blank piece of good land and look to develop it a couple of years down the road. You know, if I recall, and I certainly could be wrong on this, from four years ago or something, when this came before the council, I think the same owner owns that industrial, the Colonial Industrial Park right down Ten Mile, down towards Rushton Road, where they did build all those buildings, and I don't know what the occupancy rate is, but it's pretty, it's pretty good down there, and they've done a good job with it. I'm not sure why they didn't replicate the effort here. The other part that comes into play, just, I just want to share some of the background for the benefit of those who weren't able to attend the Planning Commission meetings. So, you know, it came into the, into effect here that, you know, this piece of property abuts a heavy industrial parcel to the south. Actually, it's the back end of the Michigan Seamless 2. And if Michigan Seamless 2 basically wanted to, they've talked about over the years, a couple of things, modifying the business, expansion and so forth, and if they wanted to expand out the back of that property of theirs, they could expand it all the way out to Dixboro Road, and that heavy industrial application would be right at the lot line for these houses. Okay, no buffer, no duplexes, no apartment buildings between them and the single-family home. The other thing that came up in the discussion, and this obviously is a, was a concern, because in the discussion initially, Mr. Schroeder was extolling the virtues of the open space that the development was going to have, all the green area that the residents would be able to partake of and enjoy, and then one of the Planning Commission commissioners brought up the fact that, well, it's an industrial area right to the east of this, and there's a lot of noise and whatever. That's the point at which he volunteered to put in triple-pane windows, two-by-six walls with extra insulation. So basically, what he's volunteered to do is build a subdivision of houses where people could basically stay in place, okay? Just, you know, so they're not subjected to that. So much for being able to go out and enjoy their yards and so forth. The other question, and we talked about this earlier, I asked if there was a traffic impact study done, you've got about sixty houses going in this parcel of property, that's best case, two adults per day, you know, you head it out in the morning after the pandemic's over, two adults coming back at night, so that's about two-hundred-and-forty trips per day going up and down Dixboro Road. I think everybody that's been down Dixboro Road knows exactly what kind of condition that road would be left in. And again, the fact is, we need some light industrial property. We have sixty-three percent in the city that is currently zoned and zoned as residential, I believe was your number, Kelly, and we have less than five percent that's light industrial. The information, listening to the presentations that have been made by Ms. Spencer there and Mr. Schroeder, the information's been kind of manipulated, managed over time to kind of fit the scenarios that they continually want to come up with, that best fits their desired outcome. Point is, you know, people move into this subdivision, and it's fully built out, you have fifty-nine houses there, and Mr. Schroeder and Ms. Spencer are gone, and I know who the residents are going to be calling because they're right next door to the Michigan Seamless 2 on the lot line there, and the problems with the truck traffic, if Michigan Seamless 2 wanted to provide an access to their property off of Dixboro Road, right down that stretch of property, they're going to be calling the city. It was zoned light industrial to avoid those types of problems, okay? And it abuts industrial property to the east, to the south, rezoning this thing for residential is a mistake waiting to happen, okay? There's no way in the world that me personally, I would support that. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Kurtzwell, thank you, you've been patient over there, and I also know you were on the board the last time that this came across.
Yeah, I'm a stickler for the master plan, and I think we have to look at why our master plan has this property zoned as light industrial. More importantly, I think we need to look at the applicant and say, you're the one that got yourself in this position in the beginning, and now you want the city to bail you out because you made maybe what you think is a bad investment decision, you know? So I don't think the city, under any circumstances, is required to bail any developer out because they made a bad investment decision. You knew what the property was back in the nineteen eighties, it came before city council, you asked for it to be rezoned to light industrial, the city obviously felt that that was probably a better zoning criteria or category for that property, given its location to Michigan Seamless 2 and the water facility at that time over there. So I don't see where that has changed over a couple of decades. Light industrial property, commercial property, takes a long time to sell. I can go into line township today, and I can, and I can count hundreds of property, maybe not a hundred, but under fifty lots over there, where it has been zoned light industrial for decades. And what you do is you wait until those opportunities arise, and I just don't think the applicant has taken the time to market the property. I would agree with Councilman Kennedy, I have had clients over the past five years that have been looking for places to rent. I think the property that possibly the council member is talking about is Dennis Dubach's, Denny's development there on Ten Mile and Rushton, and he has got a great gold mine there. Those places are fabulous, and I'll tell you, Penny was excellent of a developer that, that's why he bought what they call the Quonset Hunts down there on Rushton. Why? Because there are small businesses that are looking for small places that they can get into, especially entrepreneurs, try their business for a couple of years, and not be tied down to a significant land investment. So I think for whatever reason, the applicant hasn't tapped into the entrepreneur business individual who is looking for opportunities to find a place to go. I'll tell you, I have one client that actually rents space over on Mill Street. I mean, that's where he has to go, he has to go to a rental yard, you know, and store his business equipment next to the guy that just got evicted. You know, wouldn't it be nice if you had a business center like Denny's got, where you've got some nice facilities over there for businesses? I have to stay by the master plan, it's zoned light industrial, the city does not have a lot of light industrial available, period. I looked at those properties that were on the list, that were provided by the engineer or for the developer, and I don't know where the engineer got their information, but the engineer was wrong. You know, those, those light industrial properties that are over there on Mill Street are next to those businesses, not because it's necessarily available for the general public to go and build something on, they have those properties there because they're looking at expansion at some point, and they want to make sure they have enough property to expand their business. So even though it may appear it's light industrial, it's not light industrial that's really available for the general, you know, guy to go out and to bring in a new business into town. That property is extremely, extremely restricted. In fact, I would say, Kelly, I don't know what numbers are, but I think it's below five percent, I really do.
Or something.
Yeah, yeah, it is not five percent, it's below that. So I personally cannot, I'm not going to vote to rezonate because I think that's consistent with my policy that I've had over the years. It's light industrial, it's perfectly zoned light industrial, and I think that if the applicant takes the time and the opportunity to market it and put something in, and I'll tell you, I'll tell you something, I went back and I looked at the documents on this. You want to know why there's a road in there? There's a road in there because at that time, that's exactly what they were thinking about doing, was putting in stalls for businesses to come in. Take a guess what's been done over in line township, and they're filled, same thing. So why wouldn't it work in South Line? So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell, for your insight. Councilmember Walton, thank you, go ahead. Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell, for your insight. Councilmember Walton, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I have a question and it just, I'm not sure if we have the answer on this, but has the the underground plume been tested on that side of the two mill as it has on the other sides? Do we know if the plume reaches this area?
I don't know who we would direct that question to, Councilmember Walton.
I don't, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe that that plume that was discovered, it's been worked, discussed at council with Eagle is on that particular property. It was on properties to the south of the Michigan Seamless Tube by the railroad or where the old railroad tracks were by the trail, as well as Michigan Seamless Tube properties. That that was all. It did not migrate, did not migrate to the west.
Is it just because it wasn't tested or just because it it's really not there?
No, they determined where the plume was and it was not on this particular property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, City Managers. I like, City Attorney Hamamay, I'm very sorry. I did, I meant to come to you after Councilmember Kurtswell. Please, go ahead.
It's no problem. I guess I was just wanting to inquire, Mayor, about the procedures. I know you wanted Kelly to do the presentation and council to be able to ask Kelly questions. But there is an applicant whose rezoning request you are considering. It sounds like we've kind of shifted into deliberations. It might be appropriate to, and I don't know your timeline, but it might be appropriate to consider allowing the applicant to speak at some time, at some point soon.
No, certainly, that's that's fine. I thought it was important that that the council members get a chance to ask questions of Ms. McIntyre, who's been on on board with this, obviously, multiple times. And so as long as none of the other council members have anything immediately to say, I will give the floor to Mr. Schroeder.
I've got something.
Okay, Mr. Schroeder, just one moment. Forgive me. Councilman Richards, go ahead.
I just, I could talk a lot, but I'll just bring up one thing that Mr. Schroeder and Mr. Zurlag have brought up in the evaluation of the property. They call it a blighted property, okay? Well, there's a, there's a conflict of contradiction here, okay, and and definition. A blighted property is something that's polluted and contaminated and has not just open space as this property is. And I can almost guarantee you that if this site plan was built, okay, by definition, with the density that's proposed, you're going to create a trailer park with brick walls, okay, that creates its own blight, okay? In a manner of speaking, of a different kind.
I, Councilmember Richards? Yeah, thank you for your feedback. We're going to give the floor to Mr. Schroeder now. And councilmembers, if you do have a question at this point in time, please raise your hand or or Councilmember Richards speak up and will, I will, you know, honor that that time to you. But go ahead, Mr. Schroeder, you've been very patient and I do appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate that also. Those were a lot of good questions. Unfortunately, we didn't have a chance to explain the the full picture yet. But if I could turn the floor over maybe to Ms. Spencer, Michelle, the engineer, maybe she could enlighten a lot of the questions you had, along with Mr. Zurlag and the current owner of the property also would like to speak. I think you can, we can have a lot of those questions answered and hopefully enlighten a lot of the conversation that needs to be addressed. Please, Mrs., if it's okay, can Michelle answer the engineer?
Good evening, council. Thank you for letting us appear here before you tonight. I apologize. Usually I make my presentation after the planner, so I was a little bit blindsided getting a bunch of responses before I've had a chance to provide any information from my side. So the way I have many industrial clients. I've done numerous industrial sites from 100 acre sites for Ashley Capital, which is a very large industrial company. I've done numerous industrial sites. I have many clients. Independent Management Corporation, Ron Acabeli. I've spoken with a number of them actually about this property because I was curious. The property is listed at a quarter of what many of the other properties in the area are listed for, which are, which are similar properties and the other properties are not currently developed. The way industrial works is an industrial park is put into place and then they put build to suites, build to suit properties that are then put out there and the people who are looking to build industrial then come in and say, this is what I'd like to be built here. And the person that owns the property then builds. This, the, I also want to make something clear. The applicant is not the same person as the property owner who had originally come before the board to get this rezoned industrial that the owner of the property is the one that previously came before you 30 years ago to get this rezoned from residential to industrial. They put it up for sale. We're not getting any bites, so they decided to develop it, much like they did their other industrial pieces of property. They developed it, they put in the road, they put in all of the utilities, stormwater, water main and sanitary. They have stubs out to each one of these parcels ready for the build to suit, build to suit a new property owner coming in. Then they listed the property for sale for all light industrial uses. They did not limit what they could develop. They provided all of the information there and they set it up and listed the property in 2003. I do, the the current person listing the property, Thomas Duke, Mark Zurlag, is not the same person listing the property. There was a different person originally listing the property. Unfortunately, when you list a property, you don't keep all of the past information, as did the existing property owner did not on this piece of property. So they listed it to suite and they didn't get any bites. Originally, they were listing it at much more money because it was developed piece of property. They did not get any bites. Many years went by and they switched realtors and they listed it to suite. Another applicant came in requesting this to be a multiple site, much like the corner was rezoned a few years ago to multiple. This, they requested a duplex site here. Amongst those, among those 18 years or so, there were not one call, from what I was told by the Realtor, there was not a single call for this site as industrial as it is currently developed. However, they did request to do a duplex here that was denied unanimously, as Kelly very well laid out the past history of the site. And it was denied unanimously. And so we are coming to you with an open space cluster option, which we are far under the density allowed for this particular cluster option. And the entire, so our reasoning for saying that it's not in demand is the fact that it was developed. The owner of the property put in hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop the property and listed it for sale. The other properties that are listed for far more money are not currently developed. They are vacant industrial sites. So there is a big difference between this west industrial to the other sites that are currently for sale for more money. The, after sitting, we spoke with Kelly. Mr. Schroeder met with her and she agreed that this would be a beautiful development here and this would be good for attainable housing, seeing as there was industrial to the south with residential to the west, north and east of here. She recommended, Tom, go forward and get an engineer and he came and hired me and we put together this plan. Originally, we went with a standard rezoning for an RT development. We withdrew that at the recommendation of the planning commission and came back three additional times, meeting all of their requested requirements and making changes as they requested and putting more money into the site to meet what the planning commission commission had requested and the planner had recommended to us. Now we come before you, we would like for you to consider that 20 years of actively trying to sell an industrial site isn't, is enough to show that the demand for housing is greater than industrial. I will answer any development, site development. I will answer any questions that you have regarding the site, the development of the site, or if you would prefer a different option of a public benefit, whether you wanted Mr. Schroeder to pave the road from West Lake Street to the entrance of the site, rather than the sidewalk going into downtown and providing the public benefit to the residential going into downtown from this area along the main West Lake Street.
I also have Mark Zurlag, which is an expert, speak now. He's on in the audience, if I raise his hand, but I think he can speak very clear to this zoning and this industrial piece. Mark, you available?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, great. Thank you.
Great. I will, I'll try to be brief. My name is Mark Zurlag, the Thomas Duke Company, specialized in the sale of vacant land in southwest Open County and Livingston County for over 30 years, providing the following information on behalf of the property owners, the Smiths. Subject property, as we mentioned, was was annexed in 1989. 1999, a site plan and rezoning at Smith's request for an industrial park came forward. At that time, they were marketing the property for sale, for lease, it to one user, to multiple users and with no interest. So in 2003, decision was made by the owners to spend the money, hoping to spur interest by developing the property with roads and utilities as an industrial park. Doesn't need, as I mentioned, doesn't need to be a monster sized user. It could be a small user, one of the men, just like the users that Councilman Kennedy and Councilman Kurtswell have mentioned. In hindsight, it was a huge mistake. Seventeen years since the property has been developed, there has been no sale, no offers, no interest from anyone interested in the underlying zoning. During this time, Chuck and Lois Smith have hired several commercial brokerage firms who have all tried and failed to sell or lease this property to anyone under the current zoning. In 2015, the Thomas Duke Company were hired. It was hired over the last five years. We have sent out over 3,900 marketing pieces, averaging 200 per quarter that go out on a regular basis specifically targeting industrial users and developers and brokers. During the last five years, we have procured five offers, all of them from residential developers, zero from industrial users or developers. Here's the important part. This is what we've learned. During the last five years, we spoke with dozens of the industrial users, developers and brokers and the responses had the common theme. They don't like the location. Too far from the expressway. There's no clear path for trucks to get there, having to go through downtown South Lion. No demand from tenants. And maybe most importantly, other options are available in better locations. Now, through the planning commission meetings and again tonight, there's been a question of proof. I would ask, how do you prove there's no interest? There's no interest. We were hired not to rezone the property. We were rezoned to sell it. And I know the path of least resistance is bringing an industrial user or developer because all I've got to do at that point is negotiate a a price with the with the owners and let them come in for a site plan approval on a piece of property that's already zoned. So by far, that has been our first choice. But again, how do you prove no interest? Please keep in mind, over the last five years, we've had one of the strongest markets with the greatest activity for industrial related properties in southwest Open County. The Smiths, in fact, have been through two economic cycles with zero interest. There was a mention about a marketing report. Okay, and December 1st, I provided information from CoStar that identified 691 acres available for sale within a seven mile radius of a Smith's property. Somebody's mentioned the average price of that, $200,000, slightly over 200 grand an acre. We're asking 52,000 an acre. So clearly, the price is not the problem. Additionally, and I'm almost finished, there's been a recent announcement at the Ford, the former Ford plant in Wickham of 1.5 million square feet of industrial coming online. We understand that the master plan is not based upon, you know, current land use or zoning decisions in the current market, but rather long term in a reasonable amount of time. It's been 25 years. All the while, the property has been available for sale or lease. With all of the available properties I mentioned, if not all have superior locations, there's no confidence this site will be sold or leased as it's presently zoned. I'm saddened to say that since the last planning commission meeting, Chuck Smith, one of the owners, passed away. True gentleman, he was 88 years old. He survived by his wife of 67 years, Lois Smith. She's unable to join us tonight, but her son-in-law and business partner, Rob Matthews, is here to answer any questions. In, 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 just final comment. The owners respectfully request you approve the rezoning. If denied, for the purpose of zoning, keeping it this zone until sometime in the future, has been previously stated on many occasions, we would ask the city to buy the property instead of instead of holding us, holding it hostage. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kennedy, I'm going to come to you after we go to Councilmember Dilk. She has not spoken twice like you have. Councilmember Dilk, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that it's been difficult to sell and I do emphasize, empathize with that. But I just come back to the reasons, the reason to rezone this to industrial still exists, in my opinion. So I just feel like, and I just wonder what your response to this is, is just because industrial isn't selling doesn't mean from, to me, that it's okay to put houses, to put residential in that spot. It doesn't make it necessarily okay. And when I hear things like, we're going to, you know, double up the thickness of windows and walls, that makes me worried that we are going to have unhappy residents if we put houses there. So I'm just wondering if the if the reason still exists that this should have been residential and not, or it should have been industrial, then why now is it okay to put houses there when nothing has changed?
Can I answer that?
Yes.
Thank you. A couple of things. One is the owners requested it to be changed from residential to industrial. That's why it's industrial. It's not industrial for any other reasons because they asked for it.
The reasons that they asked for it, though?
To try to sell it. It was residential. They tried to sell it. They tried, thought it could sell better as industrial. The flat, flat out proof is in 30 years, it hasn't sold. I think that's about as proof as you can get, rock solid proof. The best economy in our lifetime, in fact, the best economy in our lifetime, and zone industrial, the guy spent a lot of money with putting the streets and improvements in and to to make smaller pieces, to have it a lot more, how I say, bite sized pieces for any one of all the industrial uses could have, no one in in these 18 years. So he spent a lot of money. He literally spent the rest of his lifetime trying to sell this property as industrial, proof positive, it didn't sell. I mean, it's, but anyway, you know, it's getting a little bit different to go over that. I've been working and developing and building houses in around South Lion for about the last 30, 38 years, frankly. My parents live in South Lion, my children, my grandchildren playing the ball field there. I go watch their little league games. I have a lot of properties. I go on about, I'm very, very invested in South Lion and want the best for South Lion. My wife's lived there her whole life, her family, half of her family built half of South Lion, to be honest. So, and to have the best intentions for South Lion, I mean, downtown can use a lot more foot traffic. The store, I personally, me and my wife, my family, we go down and shop between the gas stations and restaurants. And shopping down there probably at least once a day. So they have a lot more, there's 59 people and they're going to have this 70, 70 some odd, 73, I think apartments right in the corner. They have that sidewalk, they have foot traffic to get down to downtown. foot traffic to get down to downtown, to make that more vibrant. I mean, here, I mean, you look around, frankly, you see like, well, there's Milford, Northville, Plymouth, Howell, Brighton downtown, there's a lot of vibrant downtowns, and I think with more foot traffic to get the folks downtown, I would love to see our downtown look a lot better and have a lot more traffic than what it has right now. Keeping this industrial is, I mean, I guess I'll politely say, nothing short of insanity. Eighteen years of trying and spending a lot of darn money and not being able to get anyone in there, is just, it's insanity to think you're gonna be able to, in the best economy in our lifetime, and, and you're gonna try to keep it that way? I mean, that's just, that's just incredible. I mean, here's a guy, frankly, the owner right here, he'll be in the funeral home in downtown South Lion tomorrow. He's waited his whole lifetime trying to change this and sell this property, now his son-in-law, I guess, is, and his wife is the owner, and there, and he's online too, he'd like to speak also, but, but they've been paying these taxes for all these years, and unable to sell this, I guess, like you said, their solution is, you guys buy it back. You think you're gonna keep it industrial for another twenty, thirty years of taxes? And blight, someone asked about blight, yeah, I call that blight. I drove by there, when I first looked at it, there was dump, there was concrete, there was trash dumped down there, the sign on the front had graffiti on it, yeah, that's blight. Now, I didn't look up the dictionary definition, but I think that's a definition of trash dumped and blight, graffiti on the signs. I got a dumpster, I cleaned it up, yeah, it looks terrible, and there's no taxes coming in. I think they have fifty-nine vibrant little homes, and they'd be more attainable homes, not some of these big shooter homes up in, where they're six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars, those aren't very attainable. These would be more attainable homes, and the soundproofing, someone brought that up? Well, I always thought that the biggest complaint at the city was, by the residents is a noise from the sound mill, the noise from the tube mill. So I thought, all right, well, here, I offered to make more soundproof windows and soundproof walls, not to have the residents have more peace in their home, so they won't be calling and complaining like all the other, a lot of the other residents, I understand, that's what they, they, there's a lot of noise, and they call and complain at the city hall. So to help, help the city hall and help the future residents, I offered to make that more soundproof of a home. And yes, there is a buffer around there, it's not that, the buffer would offer, between the back of homes and the industrial property, it offers, there's trees there, it offers buffer, I don't think anyone's gonna wanna go walk there necessarily, they probably wanna walk on the sidewalk and go into downtown, go shopping and spend their money in downtown, not walk in someone else's backyard, so I not, I really don't see that being viable. But thank you for letting us present our interview. Also, now, if you have any questions, I think Mark and if we could have the current owner's son-in-law, which is one of the son, one of the current owners, if he could please speak to this issue of trying to sell this for, for all these years, yeah, Rob Matthews, he's online.
Mr. Schroeder, please, hold on for a moment, we, we're gonna allow everyone to speak. Councilmember Dill, then address your question.
Yes, just my point was that, just because it's not selling, doesn't mean it's a good place for houses, and that's all I wanted to address. Thank you.
Apartments, right?
Mr. Schroeder, Councilmember Kennedy, you've been patient, go ahead with your question, and then Mr. Schroeder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's, let's go back to what Ms. Spencer said. Did I understand that you said that Kelly recommended rezoning this to residential at one point?
She did not recommend it, what she did, when we brought a conceptual plan before her, she said that it looked like a great plan for the site.
Yeah, okay, I just wanna make that clear, because I have never heard Kelly recommend rezoning this to residential. The other thing that's always interesting, and, and it's good, you know, that you use the same, the same narrative over and over so that we can talk about it, you know, it's so far from the expressway, it's not a good location. They never, they didn't move the expressway, the expressway is the same distance it's always been, when the guy purchased the property. And then I hear, especially you, Ms. Spencer, talk about, those trucks, the guy to go through the center of downtown to get to the expressway, you know, if they turn left at ten mile, they go up Rushden Road, it's a county road, takes them right to the expressway, same distance. The other thing that came up in the planning commission meetings, and Ms. Spencer, you made this comment at two of those meetings, fifteen miles to the expressway, actually it's five point five, just in the interest of accuracy. The other thing, and I'll go back to what Ms., you know, Councilmember Kurtswell had to say, is, the city has invested heavily in that master plan. He did that for a purpose. I heard the narrative from Mr. Schroeder, and it may have been from you too, Ms. Spencer, about, master plans are all well and good unless, you know, I as a developer need to do something different. Well, you know, as a council member, we have to look out for the benefit of the residents, the current residents, and the residents in the future. I know you don't care about the residents in the future, if you wanna put a development of houses right adjacent to a heavy industrial parcel that's directly to the south, and like I said, Michigan Seamless Tube could come right out the back of their property, that could be, come the driveway going in and out of the plant, the plant could come back out of that whole thing, and that could become a manufacturing area, right on the property line, the south property line, for that row of houses in that development. It is not an ideal location for residential property, and that's why it's zoned light industrial, and I guess, you know, the city has been here for a hundred and fifty years, your piece of property hasn't sold in twenty-five. We have plenty of time left to see when it will sell. And I'll tell you what, just speaking as one of seven, the city's not interested in land speculation and buying the property ourselves, we have more important things to spend our money on. Just my opinion, thank you very much.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to address the engineer. Quite frankly, I don't think you were blindsided by any stretch of the imagination. I think what you did is you had an opportunity to sit back and listen to what we had with respect to arguments, and it gave you an opportunity to counter-argue. I can't think of a better advantage that anybody could have appearing before this council than sitting back and listening to the debate, and coming quite prepared with some answers. You would not have had that opportunity if you had spoken first. So, let's take the blindsided issue off the table, you were put in an extremely favorable position. Next, with respect to your comment regarding bill to suit, developers that I have known that have built these types of projects or parks, industrial parks, have, have built the actual tenant housing themselves, they built it on speculation and they've done very well. What we have here is a difference in approach to development, is that I think the developer wants to have the money upfront before he puts in the tenant location, and there are other developers that say, I'm gonna go ahead and start putting up the tenant locations, putting a door, putting a garage, putting a driveway up to these, and I'm gonna do it on speculation, and those are the individuals that appear to do quite well. So once again, it's a, it's a difference in, in how you're gonna develop the property. One is, you wanna hold back and use the theory called OPM, I'm sure everybody knows what OPM, other people's money, you wanna use my money, my down payment, my, my closing at the closing for this place, and then you'll build me my tenant, rather than you coming in and fronting the money, putting it up and renting it. So you have a choice for a stream of income, but you've chosen a different avenue to get that stream of income, I just wanna bring that up. I, I guess you've been spending twenty years actively trying to market the property, I've been here twenty-two years, I, maybe you've had a sign out there on the property, I've never seen it, maybe it's just been marketed through direct mail, maybe that's how it's being done. But once again, a master plan is not there to say that we will develop this property within a statute of limitations. Master plans are to look down the road, the future, and if you're unhappy with that future, that future twenty years is not appealing to you, well then, you know, I don't know what to tell you, because you may have to sit on that property for thirty years or forty years, I don't know, I don't have the answer. But I think that you need to understand that a master plan is a vision document, it's not a document where overnight, this is what's going to happen. I look at master plans all the time, and there's property, you go to Lion Township, there's property that's been zoned certain ways, light industrial for decades, and I'm sure Mr. Zerlag can talk about the movement of light industrial property in Lion Township, which probably is not moving quite quick, anyway. I'd like to let you know that Amazon was looking for a spot, and Mr. Zerlag might be able to talk about that, Amazon was looking for a spot to begin housing some of its trucks, its facilities, I think they were looking for vacant land, I don't know, they seemed to land in Lion Township, I understand Mr. Zerlag markets property in Lion Township, I don't know if he considered or went to Amazon and said, hey, I also got a client in South Lion, so I don't know if you ever presented Amazon with, with our property, or maybe you weren't the realtor involved with the Amazon project. With respect to the location of the property, once again, and it's Dubax Property, is right there at Rushden and Ten Mile, he seems to do okay, his places are filled, and he's no further from the expressway than where this property is. And with respect to encouraging more people to walk downtown and enjoy our downtown, and that this development would bring additional people to come and shop at our stores, you're talking to the wrong group. You need a haul up, you need a cowboy up, and you need to go to Lansing and talk to that governor. The reason these downtowns are not, don't have people in them is because you got restaurants at twenty-five percent. You started opening up this economy, when this economy was good, that downtown was busy, that downtown had people. So I don't see this, this development on Dixborough as making a significant difference in our downtown traffic. We were doing incredible with our pumpkin fest, with our car shows, our downtown was packed, our ladies nights were packed, we can get the people in. So that argument that you're bringing new people into the downtown area, talk with the governor on that one. And last, I am just curious, what is the fair market value of this property? I'm just curious, what is it?
Buyer's willing to be a seller.
Well, the answer obviously is whatever a buyer is willing to pay, and of course, no one's been willing to pay anything for industrial for the last twenty-some-odd year or so.
What was the lowest offer that was ever offered on this property?
There were none. Mark, could you speak to that?
Because I'll find you somebody that'll buy it for ten thousand.
Mr. Schroeder, did you wanna see if Mr. Zerlag would like his time on the floor here?
Mark, are you able to answer some of these questions for us, please?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, we got you now, Mr. Zerlag.
The, well, we, the lowest offer that we've had on the property was about one point one million, and it was for residential use, and we did not reach an agreement with that particular buyer. The asking price that we have right now at fifty-two thousand dollars an acre is twenty-five percent of the average industrial land within seven miles. So we are giving it away.
So what's the dollar amount?
Millions, fifty-two thousand times thirty-two acres, million seven fifty, some million eight, somewhere in that range.
Why don't you drop your price and see what you'll get? You're not willing to drop your price.
The, the price is confidential between the seller and the buyer, I can assure you that the price that we are under contract at is not at our asking price, significantly below. Again, we, we feel that, you know, as a buyer, as an incentive to the market, twenty-five percent is a pretty substantial discount, and I would, you know, the people that you guys have mentioned, again, because I'm, I'm here on behalf of the sellers, the people that you have mentioned, please have them call me, you know, if they, if they're, you know, have them call me. They haven't yet.
Not at their price.
Okay, so, we've had a pretty good opportunity to allow everyone to speak here, and I would be willing to entertain a motion one way or the other on this. Councilmember Kivell, go ahead, you're on mute, by the way.
I'm going to interject the different side of this coin. Quite honestly, I would love to see this remain as light industrial, but I have to clarify, some of the discussion that has taken place already has just been patently false. We had light industrial at the end of Mill Street, and we rolled over and built Knowles. If the sanctity of our master plan is, is what it's been characterized as, how on earth did that happen? And I'm not trying to pick on anybody or call out anybody, it's, opportunities present themselves, and you either go along with the opportunity, or you hold your feet to the fire and, and hope like crazy that you end up ultimately being satisfied with the I don't, I think anybody that's on this board would end up realizing that the Knowles is probably a pretty doggone good asset for this community to have. I think if this were built, it would probably end up quickly being a reward to see our tax values go up, to see people's foot traffic going into town, as was mentioned. The notion, to characterize the idea that being around the tube mill is some kind of horrible circumstance, we've got an awful lot of people that live in South Lion around the tube mill, that seem to survive quite comfortably, there's people across Dixborough Road in four, five-hundred-thousand-dollar houses that seem to survive being around the tube mill. As I said, my preference is absolutely to, to find somebody that would end up developing this as a light industrial. I just don't want us to try to, to throw shade at these people, because they have a project that they're pitching, we may not end up agreeing that that's the best case for this, but I just don't wanna try to vilify them, simply because they're trying to make their point, and, and we're hell-bent to see that that doesn't survive, so, I, I just wanted to put that on the table.
No, I think, Councilmember Kivell, that's, I think that's important to say, and I completely agree, you know, everyone involved on the other side of this, obviously, has spent a lot of time to put this together. I just felt like we've gotten to the point, at this point in time of the discussion, that we've, we've covered our bases here, we're closing in on ten o'clock this evening, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize Councilmember Kennedy here, and, and hopefully we'll be, we'll be making some progress here shortly. So, Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Oh, just, again, just a little bit of background, we've heard the, the city planner, we've heard her position, we heard her position for those who attended the planning commission, her position has been, been consistent and been clear, she is not recommending rezoning this property, and I agree with her. And I'll make the motion to deny conditionally rezoning a parcel number twenty-one dash thirty dash one twenty-six dash zero zero three?
Yes.
From IT, light industrial, to R3, single-family residential, using the open-space preservation option for the following reasons. Number one, the single-family residential designation is not consistent with the city's master plan. The parcel is planned for industrial. Number two, single-family residential land use in the city is almost sixty percent of the land, less than five percent of the city's land is zoned and master planned for industrial. Therefore, rezoning the property to single-family residential does not meet a land use need or goal of the master plan. Number three, evidence has not been provided that demonstrates that the property can't be used for any of the permitted and special land uses in the current I-dash-one light industrial zoning district. And number four, the proposed use is not compatible with And number four, the proposed use is not compatible with surrounding uses to the east and to the south.
I support.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. City Clerk Deaton, I see you and recognize you, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, someone has their hand up that would like to speak. I don't know if you want to let them do that before we do the roll call vote? Or how, do you want me to handle that?
Here's, here's the thing. If, if this individual was associated with the presenters, I would recognize them at this time. If this is a public comment, the public comment is going to have to wait until the public comment, I'm sorry.
All I have is the first name of Robert. So I don't know if he's with the developer or not.
He is the owner.
Is that right? Okay.
He's one of the owners, yes.
Okay. If that's the case.
Surviving owner.
Okay. If that's the case, Mr. Schroeder, I, we do have a motion and a second on the table, but I am going to recognize him and give, give the gentleman his time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
He's on mute still.
There you go, Robert. Go ahead.
My name is Robert Matthews. Um, my address is 9612 Silver Side Drive, South Lion, Michigan. Um, I've been a resident in South Lion pretty much my whole life. And my wife, she has been a resident of South Lion her entire life. And as far as this piece of property, you know, we, we came to the city, um, with a dream. There's no question about that. And we have put up beyond what we're asking for this in developing it. The money that we have in the, the site work, I mean, I don't think any of you have a, a, a concept of what sanitary sewer, you know, we put in over a mile of sanitary sewer, over a mile of water main and a mile of, of storm sewer. And we got the project done and nothing has happened with it in, in the past 20 some years. And again, going back to the master plan, and I appreciate a master plan in a, in a town, a community. It is important. I understand that. But this property was not zoned industrial. Your master plan was developed after we rezoned it. It was, it wasn't part of your master plan. That, that was something that we created. Yes, we did create that. And yes, it's, it was a mistake. And to hold us hostage for another 30 years is ludicrous. And it, it just, it's not going to happen. I mean, something, something's going to change. It has to, because it hasn't sold. And I don't know what the, 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 you know, we got, um, Mrs., uh, Kurtzwell, talking about wanting to know how much money that we're, we're, we're going to make off this. We're not making anything off of this. We're losing money because of the investment that we got in the underground. Again, nobody has any clue on that. There's almost a million dollars in the ground in, in utilities that we've put in there. And that doesn't include the labor that we put into it as well, because we, we own our own excavating company. We, we did all the site work. We did all the, everything. And here we are at this point, and I really feel that approving a denial at this moment in time is, is a wrong decision. And I don't know if I could, if I've answered anything or helped anything, but I really feel that, that the right decision would be for an approval. The planning commission recommended it. They gave you their, their recommendation that it did. Which I know that you guys are the, the, the end result, and I appreciate that. And I know that it's, it's a heavy burden that you guys bear because it, it results in a lot of problems if it's denied. But hopefully you'll understand my, my feelings and, and how, I mean, how we feel about it, but. And I mean, my father-in-law, you know, he's 80, 80 some years old, passes away. And I'm in my 60s. If I, if I, I gotta wait till, till another 30 years, I'll be dead. It'll be my grandkids or my children's issue, and they'll be in their 60s by that time. I guess I'm, I don't think I can say much more.
Thank you, Robert. We do appreciate your time. We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Um, do we have any further discussion from council? Okay, Councilmember Kurtzwell, I didn't see your hand. You go ahead and go first, Councilmember Kibble. I will come to you next.
I'd like some clarification from the gentleman. What kind of problems are you talking about that we're going to have if this is denied? I don't know how to interpret that comment.
I'm not sure what his comment was, but I can tell you the Knolls, as you were saying, is one of the jewels of the county, uh, or the, or the city. And then the Sphinx Division across the street, they have a bunch of beautiful houses. We both know that they had to sue you guys. And in one case, they want a million dollars from the city to build the Knolls. And they're almost all sold out. They're down to six houses. That, that's just, that's a bad way to do business, guys.
Okay, thank, thank you for clarifying what your intention is if you don't get what you want.
Well, that, no, I'm saying that's what the other builders did to get what they want, and they got it, but it cost the city a lot of money for being, uh, not good decision, clearly, because the courts. Diane Dubach got a.
All right. Mr. Schroeder, I, I, there's a lot going on here. We're gonna.
There's a lot of emotions and a lot of.
I understand.
From my mouth, I did not say that I was going to sue the, the city or anything to that such. So don't be putting words in my mouth.
Okay.
I asked you to clarify, what did you mean when you said that there will be problems for us if we deny your zoning request? And I said, I just want clarification of what you meant by that. And Mr. Schroeder appeared to have clarified it. Now, if that's not the correct meaning of what you intended, then just tell me what you meant when you said that.
I spoke. I'm sorry.
I mean, you're out on tax basis right now. You're losing out on a substantial amount of tax basis. I sat and listened to you guys discuss and, and strategize over trying to make the best of the money that the city has by investing it properly. I get all that. And here, you're going to make an unwise decision and have no tax basis for the next 30 years? You don't think that's going to cause you problems? Having zero taxes, basically, coming out of a 40 acre parcel, a 32 acre parcel. That causes a great deal of hardship for the city.
Thank you for the clarification, Robert. I thought there was another council, Councilmember Kibble, you asked to be recognized, go ahead.
I was just curious if anybody had any interest in the notion of a postponement as opposed to simply denying this. Everyone seems to be pretty, pretty bent on their position, so.
Yeah, we, we have a motion and a second on the floor, so we will handle that. And then if there is some sort of issue that we may end up on another motion, we can address that. Did anyone else have anything to add council members wise on, on this before we go to a roll call vote? I will quickly add my two cents to this, growing up in this community. I've seen this property sit there. I am aware of the investments into the property. I applaud the team that came in to speak with us tonight in their efforts to help us understand where they'd like to see the property go. At the end of the day, the seven of us that sit up here have a job to do. And now that we have the facts laid out, we can do that job. And in my personal opinion, um, this is not a fit for this community. And so that's where I'm at with it. Um, as long as none of the other council members have anything to add, I will ask City Clerk Deaton to lead us in a roll call vote.
Uh, Richards?
Yes.
Yes, to deny, right? Thank you, yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kibble?
Uh, no.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, City Clerk Deaton, you did not ask for my.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mayor Peltow?
Uh, I will also, um, be, uh, supporting that.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for that.
That's okay. Thank you again to everyone for their time this evening. Uh, we'll be moving on.
Thank you for your time.
To the budget this evening. I don't know if anyone has anything on the budget this evening. Okay, um, with that, we'll move on to our second public comment. And if you missed the first one, I'd like to remind everyone that if you take your mouse or touchpad or tablet, you can check at the bottom to raise your hand virtually. Um, and then, or you can raise your hand physically, um, and City Clerk will, Deaton will see you and we will recognize you at that time.
There is no one raising their hand right now.
I'll give it just a little bit more time. That was a, a marathon session there. Okay, if we still have nobody there for public comment, we will close public comment and move on to the manager's report.
First thing was the 2122 budget. I did include within your packet a couple dates for our first pre-budget meeting. It'd be either Wednesday, March 10th or Thursday, March 11th. Please get back with me on which date you possibly can attend. A reminder also, next week, we will have our joint city council planning commission meeting to discuss the zoning ordinance rewrite. Upcoming city council agenda, we'll be discussing the mural ordinance. Uh, also 318 West Lake Street, we're moving forward with a proposal for the development of that property. We've agreed with the applicant regarding a conceptual drawing. They're going to be getting us additional information. Hopefully we'll continue to move that forward. And I want to give a big shout out to the DPW Water and Sewer Staff. Everybody hit the plumbing in the past week or two with the heavy snow we had and getting the streets cleaned, downtown's clean and making everybody, uh, have the ability to arrive safe to all their destinations on all those days. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Anyone have anything for Paul tonight? Oh, okay. Uh, Councilmember Kennedy, you go ahead and go first.
Paul, I, I sent you an email just, it was kind of late in the day. I'm just curious, you know, if that, uh, simple recycling thing is, uh, is operating again, where they pick up the, uh, the clothing in those orange bags? Are they, are they back collecting right now or not, you know?
Uh, I don't have the answer for you right now, Steve, but I can check.
Yeah, if you want, thanks. Go ahead.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I was curious, Paul, if you, um, you could enlighten us a little bit about the, the 318. There's been the component of what value monetarily for that lot has been assigned to that?
It has not been established yet. Uh, you know, they made an offer, but that was only, that was only, I think, 25% of the total evaluation of the, uh, submittal. Uh, so we have not submitted, had not received the final, um, offer from that particular developer for that property uh, based upon the agreed upon, uh, type of house and development on that property. So we're still waiting for that.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm very excited about what's going on, especially if you, uh, have done your homework to, to make sure that architecturally that house is going to be an appropriate fit with the neighborhood. I just don't want us giving the dirt away so that we get a, a, a structure that actually melds with the neighborhood. I think we can accomplish both things, so.
Right, yeah. And, and that was the main sticking point, was trying to get a piece of, or get a home that would be built on that property that would be compatible to the neighborhood and would look like it's been there. We didn't want something that would be extremely modern, that people drove by and said, oh, that's a fill-in, I can tell. So we didn't, we didn't want that.
No, I, I know that that'll be, uh, very valuable for the neighbors around here. We've all got houses that have some character that certainly isn't the cut of today's building. So it'll be nice that it melds right in there. I just, like I said, I don't want us to just give away the asset that we had just so that we get that building. We can accomplish both simultaneously. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for city managers only tonight? Okay, great. So we'll move on to council comments. Councilmember Walton, why don't you lead us off this evening?
Actually don't have any comments tonight, Mr. Mayor. Have a good night.
Great. You have a great night. Uh, Councilmember Dill?
Like quickly, um, Dr. Ruffin, who is a chiropractor in, um, Lion Township, has been doing some, uh, promotion giveaways. Uh, and so I met with her today and I'm going to join her, uh, in doing some in South Lion. So I'm going to, um, be helping her do that. We're going to start out at Corner Social and move from there. So, um, just letting everybody know to watch for that on Facebook, um, so that you can maybe get $5, $10 off when you go visit some of these places. Um, and then I just want to thank people who actually answered and took the time to reach out, um, when asked for, um, comments for tonight and, uh, the people who attended the meeting. I really appreciate that kind of involvement. And, uh, that's all I have. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Councilmember Richards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in the last, uh, week or so, I've become aware that, uh, our South Lion Theater is planning on closing permanently, okay? Without, uh, attempts to sell the place to somebody else that would run the theater. I'm very distressed with this. Uh, that theater is beautiful inside and it's a great asset for the community in the long run. Uh, and it, if, uh, reaching out to our DVA Director, Mr. Mack, uh, I would hope that some solution could be found to help the current owners to, uh, stick with it and maintain that place. They've invested thousands and thousands of dollars in it, and it's absolutely beautiful and it functions beautifully. Uh, I would hope we could maintain this jewel of the city. Uh, it's certainly a draw for the downtown and, uh, great meeting place for many different functions. Uh, that's the only comment I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. And I, I think a lot of people in the community echo those sentiments. Uh, Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Yes, um, let me find them real quick. Oh, here they are. First of all, what I want to do is I want to thank Ariana. She's with the Girl Scout Troop number 76803. And Gabriella, she's with Girl Scout Troop 77197 for these absolutely incredible Girl Scout cookies. So thank you, Girl Scouts. These are just great and, um, I'm just going to add a couple more pounds on in the month of March. So thank you, Girl Scouts. I wanted to bring to your attention that the Knights of Columbus, they have a fabulous fish fry over at St. Joe's Church. That's on Fridays. It starts, I believe, at around 4:30, uh, and it runs till 7 o'clock. Uh, I was there on Friday. Uh, they have an incredible, incredible, uh, takeout system. Uh, you feel very safe. Uh, everything is with Plexiglas and they just did a fabulous job. So please get out. Uh, we all need to get out, uh, and eat locally, so why not stop by St. Joe's and get a great, uh, takeout fish fry? Last, I, uh, want to say that if you need chiropractic services, uh, I would like to think that you would use one of our chiropractors here in the city of South Lion. And I would like to promote William Bailey Chiropractic. Uh, this is a new chiropractic center, so let's support our own South Lion Chiropractics, uh, chiropractors. Uh, everybody needs a little bit of help, so, uh, let's remember Wilhelm, they're over on Pontiac Trail. Well, thank you. Good night, everybody. See you in March.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, tonight I want to congratulate Sergeant Cindy Conrad and Sergeant Jeff Notrell of the South Lion Fire Department. Both of these individuals were recently promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Also, I want to congratulate firefighter Taylor Buchanan, who was promoted to the rank of sergeant. Each of these individuals had to pass a written exam, go through an interview process and a senior chief interview. To quote Chief Vogel, "This is a great group of firefighters who have not only displayed hard work and dedication, but have also invested in themselves and in this, and in the South Lion Fire Department." I congratulate. I congratulate and thank each one of them for their service to our department and the residents. Our city is so very fortunate to have such knowledgeable and dedicated individuals protecting the residents of our city. Finally, I just want to remind everyone that unfortunately, we're not finished with winter yet. So as we continue to get more snow over the next few weeks, please remember to keep the sidewalks clear. Also, please clear the snow from around the fire hydrants as well. The Fire Department recommends clearing a three-foot radius around each hydrant. And finally, remember to clear the snow from the front of your mailbox if your mailbox is located at the street. So the mail carrier can easily and safely deliver your mail. I know they'll appreciate it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. A lot of great reminders there that we were all probably reminded of here in the past week or so. Councilmember Kibble?
Yes, the, actually, the snow thing is the focus of my discontent. I, I'm really disturbed by the lackadaisical folks that think that it's all right to not shovel your sidewalk, especially people that live in the downtown. There's elderly folks, there's a lady down at Hagadorn and Ten Mile that walks with a walker and she, she's out every single day. We've got people that haven't cleaned off the crosswalks so that this lady's going to end up having to manage over a two-foot snowdrift off of the street. That's just absurd. I'm hoping like crazy that our ordinance officer is vigilant out there. We've got the same bad actors that take, no, they don't give a crap about whether this, they do anything or not. And I think that's inappropriate. I think that we deserve better in this country, or in this city. And I'm hoping like crazy that we can kinda lean on those folks to bring them into tow. That just burns me up. And just as an aside, I can kinda calm down now. I saw on Facebook, VFW says tomorrow is Taco Tuesday, so head on over there, say hi to some vets and get some tacos. All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
That's great. And, and Councilmember Kibble, just really quick, I did speak with our ordinance officer earlier this week, Mike, well, I guess it would've been last week, forgive me, just about that exact thing. And he's on it. And sometimes when you get a little lapse in the timing between those things, the, the window plays into folks to be able to take advantage of that. So, but what, our ordinance officer does a very fine job when I know they're on. So, but some great reminders and definitely get over to visit our vets at the VFW for Taco Tuesday tomorrow. I will be very brief as well. I want to thank the mayor pro temp, Mr. Kibble, and, and all of you for picking me up a couple of weeks ago when I could not be here. So thank you. I do appreciate that. Of course, you know I can't let February 22nd go by without mentioning the 45th, or 41st anniversary of possibly the greatest upset in sports history of the United States Men's Hockey Team knocking off the Soviet Union and Lake Placid in 1980. For those of you that don't know, that was not the gold medal game. And so I've got a new thing to add to it this year because the USA Women, three years ago, did win gold over the Canadians in a overtime shootout. So I'll tell you right now, if you got some free time later at home, check out the Miracle on Ice and check out our ladies from three years ago. It's, uh, you know, we've got the Olympics coming up. This country needs some things that brings us together, and those are the types of things that, that can do that. And so I, I'm very hopeful that we see that with the Summer Olympic Games. Um, and I, if I'm not mistaken, the Winter Olympic Games will be taking place early in 2022. So that's what I'm looking for, some things to bring us together. Let's all stay safe out there. We've been through a long ride here, but I, I think if we can get through this last stretch here, we'll be back on the bounce up. So with that, and a long night, we'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Hertzwell, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to adjourn.
Have a great night, all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.